Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ready?
Good evening. Okay, welcome to West Covina City Council Meeting. Today is December 1st. Right now, 7:01 and our, okay, meeting in order. Okay, tonight, our invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Martinez from Amazing Love Ministry, followed by the Pledge of Legend led by me. All rise please.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we thank you as we gather here today in the midst of so many uncertainties around us, Father. But we remember the words, the sure words of King David, the Jewish King of all, who said that the Lord is good and his mercy endures forever. We pray for your continued goodness and mercy upon our city. We thank you that you've been good to us, Heavenly Father, and we pray for that continuance of your goodness and your mercy. Keep our residents safe from this virus. And those that may be suffering through this Corona right now, Father, we pray for the healing of their bodies. We pray, Heavenly Father, for peace in our neighborhoods. We pray, Heavenly Father, for the protection of your angels over our police officers and all our first responders. We pray for our police officers all around our country and our soldiers, Father. Keep them safe. We thank you, Father, for what they're doing to allow us here to be meeting this evening, exercising the rights that we enjoy in America. And Heavenly Father, we pray that you bless the businesses during this difficult time. Help the parents, Father, that now are not just parenting but educating their children as well. Give them wisdom, patience. And, Father, give wisdom to our educational leaders, Father, and our school districts. And give wisdom to our business leaders. Father, we thank you and we bless you and we thank you for this. The Lord bless you and keep you, West Covina. The Lord make his face shine upon you, lift up his contentness upon you and grant you his shalom, peace. Now grant wisdom, Father, to all those that conduct the affairs of our city tonight. And help us all to work together, Father, in the spirit of harmony during this difficult time. God bless America and God bless West Covina in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. Everybody, please put your right hand to the heart and face the flag and follow my lead. Ready? Go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Have a seat, please. And Assistant City Clerk Rocco, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Costelanos.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker. Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Wu.
Here. Okay, as, okay, City Attorney, do you have anything report on closed session?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. And we go into our presentation. The first presentation is recognition of Pastor Kelly Dupay and the Faith, okay, Community Church for their annual turkey and fuel donation. Can you call, okay, Pastor Kelly and then, okay, talk about the magnificent charity event? I went, I think it's two weeks ago? Okay, and they have, I don't know, 600, 700 turkey? So maybe let him to describe to us how is this annual, okay, charity to help so many family?
Good evening, Pastor.
Yes. Pastor Kelly, thank you so much. I'm, okay, I know the pandemic, so you, okay, you and I think Elvis Chen, the director of your church for this event, so maybe you can, okay, and tell us about how magnificent this event? And I went there, I saw hundreds of people over there, people show up, donate turkey, donate fuel and can. And would you please tell us?
Yes, well, we had a great time putting, passing out boxes to people in our congregation. The police department took some, the fire department took some. And then Wednesday night, November 18th, we gathered all of the boxes and turkeys. And then on Thursday, November 19th, we passed out 600 boxes of groceries and turkeys to needy families. We connected with the school districts. So West Covina, Bassett, Azusa, Roland Heights, all of the school districts in our area, Covina, and many others, Baldwin Park as well. And because they're the ones that know who the neediest families are. And so we were able to give those to the districts and bless. We estimate that it, our efforts fed about 5,000 people. And it was just a great outpouring of generosity. And just want to, yeah, it, just report and just thank you for the generosity for everyone that donated. Elvis Chen did a tremendous job as our volunteer project director this year. And we're sorry we can't be there with you tonight, but want to acknowledge him and just, yeah, really affirm his leadership because he's the one who pulled it all together and made it happen.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Pastor. Okay, and again, myself and all the, I think all the city council went to the event, okay, and we even get, thank you for the invitation and we made a speech and tried to encourage all the volunteers. And we are so happy to see so many people helping our community and during this tough time. And we saw all those turkey, we saw all those few and, okay, and to provide for the needed family. So thank you again, thank you so much. And we have a two certificate for you. One is for, okay, Faith Church, okay, for this outstanding achievement and dedication to continue to serve our community. And another one for Elvis Chen for his leadership as a director for this charity event. Thank you so much, really appreciate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a pleasure and an honor to serve the people of West Covina. God bless you.
Okay, and we will send, okay, the certificate to your church. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate, okay, and have a good night and be safe. Okay, next presentation, I'm going to call for, okay, and I'm not going to have so many people show up, okay, because pandemic, but we need to recognize, okay, so many people during this pandemic and our local resident and group, okay, and they step up to help. And a lot of people question about how West Covina has so many, many, many of PPE mask, glove to donate and to give away to needed family, including, okay, all those seniors and later on, entire, okay, our resident. So here I want to show, okay, the city the deepest appreciation that all those 40, 50 group of people and they have donated for this pandemic. So here, I think I have a certificate, so I have maybe one of CAWC to help me, okay? Okay, and, okay, basically, Angel is a secretary of, okay, CAWC, Chinese American Association in West Covina. And they basically help out a lot of their members for this pandemic. I really want to thank them for donate so many PPE, okay? And I have a certificate. I don't want to give one by one to everybody because it takes so much time, but I just want to show the appreciation for the people, okay, show up today. So, okay, I think we just give, you can later on give to everybody, but, okay, for people showing up, so I can give you the certificate one by one and then you can have a picture and right away, okay, you guys can exit. So we, okay, and try to make sure we have safe distance and we have, okay, masks for everything. So the first one, okay, we want to give to which one? Okay, well, we have our president of CAWC. Would you please come up? James and the Vice President, Selena, you want to, here? Okay, and everybody know James. Okay, James donate our after-school program. James, okay, and is our local resident and they donate so many of PPE and so many of the funding basically give to our senior resident, okay? So I want to thank again, here is a certificate for the CAWC for your contribution, okay, for this, okay, charity and make sure our city resident is safe, okay? Thank you so much. You want to say something? You want to say something? Okay, President?
Okay, Mr. Mayor and all the city councils, and this is on behalf of the Chinese, Chinese American Association of West Covina. This is our great honor to have this certificate because all of us know the coronavirus is terrible. But we know in, in law Jesus, every of us, no matter what the color of our skin, we are the one family. So we believe we love each other, we help each other, can make our city, make West Covina better life and a better city. May God bless us. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Thank you, the President. And I think, okay, I want to thank all the member, James, okay, I know you donate about, what, 10,000, right?
20,000.
Okay, sorry, short change you, 20,000 masks you delivered to the city and the city help you to donate to the hospital. You want quickly say something or you okay?
It's my great honor to be invited. I'm a resident here over 15 years. I will continue support our community and support the city hall and support the mayor. Thank you.
Okay, and James is one of our resident live on the hillside and we need some senior meal program, so hopefully you can donate some money, okay? Okay, but thank you so much, appreciate it, okay? And the next one, please. I think maybe Cece, you want to come up? Okay, and we got our sister city from Harbin, okay, mailed about 3,000 mask, okay, and to the city. And, and see, we even have our sister city from China shipped, okay, 3,000. You want to say quickly about our sister city mayor really care about what's going on in West Covina and they want to help out? Go ahead.
Thank you, everyone. I'm Cece, a president of North Southeast Overseas Chinese Association, and I'm honored to be represented to get the word. And we'll follow all things to Harbin mayor, Harbin government. And I hope in the future between the two cities, the whole citizens safe and we together to fighting coronavirus. I trust we must have a good future. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, Lori, remember her?
Yeah.
Okay, Lori and myself, we went to Harbin last year, January, with the, okay, with the West Covina mayor, okay, dedication to Harbin with the snow and ice festival. And I want to thank our sister city mayor to give us, okay, the invitation. That's, we have a chance, myself and Lori went to Harbin and it's a magnificent, beautiful city. And hopefully the pandemic is over, we can invite our mayor from Harbin to visit, okay, West Covina. And hopefully, okay, most important thing is progress, peace and friendship. So would you please represent West Covina, okay, tell the mayor, we really appreciate the friendship and the 3,000, okay, PPE, let's send to us. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, appreciate. And next one will be... No, I think we already joined. James, you want to come over here again?
My wife.
Oh, your wife, okay. So thank you for the, another 20,000 and maybe, maybe senior meal program, okay? Thank you, okay, and I really appreciate 20,000 masks shipped from overseas to West Covina. And I know it's direct, okay, and I know it costs a lot of your money, but we city really appreciate helping so many, many of our resident.
It's my great honor.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, thank you. Mr. Penn? Yeah, you are the person on my Facebook, you deliver the, okay, PPE and everything, okay, into, in my house. So I remember you and your wife show up, right?
Yeah.
Okay, you want to say something?
Uh,不说.
Okay, that's okay, just donate more, okay? Thank you, Mr. Penn. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, is this the last one? Okay. Lisa, you donate 250 mil to our hospital, okay, with the meal program. Okay, I think this is magnificent. I know you own the restaurant, but I know you suffer a lot for your restaurant business, but you still donate 250 mil to Queensville Valley and above 100 mil to our city for our police and fire. And I think nobody know, okay, this is the hero help our city and the hospital to have a meal, okay, for lunch. And that lunch is very delicious. I think all the police and fire told me the food is so good, so hopefully we can have more from you. Well, hopefully we will pay forward, so I know you suffering right now. Thank you so much. Uh, thank you so much, okay? Thank you for the food, thank you for the lunch. Grace? Grace? Yeah, I remember, okay, you deliver, and I think I went to your home to pick it up, right? Or you deliver, oh, no, you deliver to the office, okay, with your husband. Okay, you donate N95. It's shipped from Shanghai from the 3M manufacturer and you have to kind of package, make sure people don't steal it, okay? And, and we received 2,000 original N95 and we give 1,000 to Queensville Valley and 1,000 to Kaiser. Yep, thank you so much. N95 is like gold. Thank you, Grace. Thank you so much, okay? Oh, who else? Okay, Ricky? Okay. Okay, Ricky, okay, and, okay, I thank you so much, okay? And I think you delivered two times to my house so for I can give to the city. And I think delayed it during the weekend, Sunday or something when the city is now open, okay? I want to thank you again for all those, okay, PPE to our senior resident. Okay, thank you so much. Let's say, right? Who else? Who else? Angel? Let's say, right? The rest you can give to them, please. Okay, and everybody receive the, okay, the certificate. Otherwise, Angel, please represent the city and provide all this to them. And to say thank you so much, the city and our resident really, really appreciate. Thank you. Okay, and... No, this is not, this is somebody else. Okay. Okay, the last presentation, I want to invite, okay, Envision. Simon and Patrick. Okay. Oh, you bring the big check. I like it. All right. The big, the big dealer with the big check.
How you doing?
Okay, pretty good. Okay, pretty good. Nice seeing you, Patrick. Nice seeing you. Okay, I, I hope people know who they are. They are our number one taxpayer. Okay, basically, they, they are the new dealer for our Mercedes-Benz. Okay, before is Penske, right now is Envision. They purchase basically everything last year, right?
Last product.
Three years ago?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. Time flew by so fast. I feel like that just yesterday. Okay, and they have Mercedes-Benz, all this, okay, Toyota, okay? And basically has all our more popular car in West Covina and they basically, I hope doing good. Yeah, I want, wish you do the best, but at the same time, they bring the check, want to help our senior meal program. Okay? Okay. Whoa, $5,000. Very generous, okay? I really, 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 really appreciate.
You've been a great partner for us.
Yeah, you know, and I know our senior right now really need a lot of help and that is why we try to help, okay, and collect and have people to donate. Okay, a lot of people help out, no matter if $10, $20, $500, $1,000. But for you, okay, and to donate $5,000 is really, really amazing. I want to thanks, represent the council, okay, I represent the city. Thank you so much for the, for the check. And by the way, where's the real check? Yeah, see, hey, I cannot, I cannot deposit this one, but I can deposit this. You want to come over here? You want this in the middle or? Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate.
Not yet, okay? And not yet, we have pictures. This is, okay, you want to keep this?
You can.
Okay, oh, okay. And for next donation, they can still write another check, okay? They can bring it back, so I wait for the next check again. Okay, hey, check in the mail. Okay, and represent West Covina, I really want to thank you guys for donate $5,000 to our senior meal program. And here, represent the council, represent the city, here is a certificate. Thank you so much for your contribution and I represent the senior and they will love you dearly. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, right here. And I think it's important for, let me see, who's this? Oh, this is for the, for the Faith Church. Would you please come, okay? I think it is important since you're here and since you are our dealer, maybe you can introduce yourself.
Sure.
And hopefully, okay, people can shop local, can understand your setup and maybe can explain to us your future, what you want to do. Yeah, go ahead, Simon.
Thank you. My name is Simon Serradine. I'm the president and CEO of Envision. We own many stores and we have four stores in West Covina right here. We got the Mercedes store, the Audi, Toyota and the Chrysler Jeep. We own a store in Norwalk, we own a store in Escondido, we own a store in Arizona as well. I appreciate the merit, I appreciate you guys. Certainly has been a very welcome business venture for us right here, the, probably the first months I got playing and, Mr. Mayor, you showed up to my office and you get to introduce himself, that was great, we appreciate that. So we're part of the city, anything we can do to help or anything you guys can do for us, we're, we're there for you. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Council, appreciate that. So we're, like I said, we're part of the city, we, we're gonna grow here and we're looking forward for great venture and great business. Thank you.
Yeah, I remember you want to show the what?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I remember you want to show us some amazing Christmas gift to our city, okay, regarding the major development, something kind of put our city on the map. That will create a lot of, generate a lot of revenue for our future. Yeah, you want to go ahead, to explain to us?
I guess Pauline got it. Go ahead. As you see, this will be the, the building, we're gonna build it in West Covina, this will be the largest Toyota store, I think, in the country. This will generate well over $400 million revenues, so certainly it will help the city and help us in, says revenue and taxes.
So this will be Toyota number one? We're gonna beat Longo Toyota?
It will, it, it's bigger than Longo.
It better, it bigger than, okay, Longo Toyota, so meaning this is the corner of Azusa and 10 freeway.
That's correct.
Yeah, so we're gonna build up, okay, and make everybody when they, okay, go through the freeway, they can see beautiful Toyotas, okay, this set up. Like, I think you expand, what is it, jewelry box, something?
What do you mean?
The jewelry box, okay, to see the car when people?
It's, it's, they call it showcase where you can actually see the car from all?
From the all direction.
Yeah, from street as well, from the freeway.
Very, very good. So meaning you really put, okay, the investment, put your money to your mouth to invest in West Covina. So I think this is a great project, we cannot wait, okay? Hopefully, okay, this can happen in no time and it's going to have a lot of cars sell from this car lot and it will bring a lot of sales revenue to our city. Okay, I want to, again, okay, thank you, okay, for really willing to invest in our city. Thank you, Simon. Anything you want to add on?
Thank you, appreciate it. We're happy to be part of it.
Okay, so I see you soon. I'll see you next check.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Really appreciate.
Thank you.
You want to bring the, you want, you want us to keep the check or you want to check for next time?
Oh, keep it.
Yeah, well, okay, I see you next month. Okay, Letty Lopez?
You're a great salesman, I got it.
Ah, hey, you want to hire me? The Letty Lopez will be the mayor, she maybe need another check from you. Okay, but thank you, Simon, thank you, Patrick. I really appreciate, okay? Again, senior, love you for the donation, thank you. Okay, we're going to move to oral communication, okay? And how many speaker we have tonight?
12, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, have them to come up.
Our first speaker is Bill Robinson, followed by Ray Vargas.
Good evening, Council, Bill Robinson, resident. I'm, I'm tired of leadership provided by ignorant and inexperienced people. Tired of living 10 months under martial laws. I, I believe in freedom. The public health justification is very thin for what's been going on. Tonight, I want to share with the council a more credible source of information. There's a newsletter called Impremise by, it's put out by Hillsdale College in Michigan. And you could get on their list by calling 800-437-2268 or the email is impremise@... sixty eight, or the email is impremise@hillsdale.edu. And again, the, to get on the list, one eight hundred four three seven twenty two sixty eight. There's a couple of examples of, of pieces they produced. One of them was six months ago, it's titled Four Months of Unprecedented Government Malfeasance. It could be retitled now Ten Months of Unprecedented Government Malfeasance. And last month, they released a sensible and compassionate anti-COVID strategy. The authors of these are, I mean, I don't have time to give all their credentials, impressive credentials. Heather McDonald, J.D. from Stanford Law School, J. Batichara, he is a medical doctor and a PhD in economics. And he was one of the co-authors. Medical experts met at Great Barrington, Massachusetts, came up with a Great Barrington Declaration. It's online at www.gbforgreatbarringtondeclaration.org. It has thousands of signatures, many, many, many of the signatures, a great percentage are public health professionals. But the infotainment, we've been provided, you know, we're, we're living under an avalanche of infotainment, information that's misguided, and a lot of our, our county guidelines, I mean, we have public health doctors that are social workers, they don't know anything about medicine, and, and we have misguided inexperienced leadership. It's taken hundreds of years to build this country, and we need to be protecting our small businesses. The mayor was quoted today as saying, everybody's in trouble, we need to have our kids back in school. I mean, I heartily agree. The ignorance and, and the misguided leadership we're receiving and acting upon is, is hurting the country. The businesses, when they collapse, go bankrupt, they're not gonna come back, it's gonna, it's gonna take decades to, and the kids, they need to be in a classroom with a teacher, education by video screen, it just doesn't work. I'm not, I'm not a professional teacher, I'm just a resident, but, but I've been through school, I, I know what, what education works, and, and I consider myself fortunate that I never had to sit through a, a video screen lecture, classroom. Anyway, I'd like to share, I've got a minute left. It says, blue state officials invoke science to justify yet another arbitrary set of guidelines as to which businesses could start up again and when. But even with official reopenings, many customers will be long reluctant to resume their normal habits, thanks to uninterrupted fear mongering, fear mongering on the part of the media, the experts, and elected leaders. There's a quote in here, and I encourage you to go to the, the Great Barrington website and sign that declaration. I think I can finish with this. The politician's ignorance about the complexity of economic life was stunning, as was their hypocrisy. Every elected official, public health expert, and media pundit who lectured Americans about the need for an indefinite lockdown, had a secure, quote, essential job. Not one of them feared his employer would go bankrupt.
Yeah, thank you so much, really appreciate. Good speech.
We're, we're being led by people that just don't care whether our businesses go bankrupt or not.
Okay.
And we, we shouldn't just sit passively by and let it happen.
Yes, thank you so much, and next speaker, please.
Ray Vargas, followed by Steve Bennett.
Yeah, go ahead, please. Good evening, Council, my name is Ray Vargas. I've been a West Covina resident for fourteen months already, and it's got its good and its bad here. I know the gentleman right in front of me, Lloyd Johnson, I've been having problems with code enforcement, a gentleman called Mylin, and another gentleman, Robert Ramirez. They singled me out, my family, racism, harassment, trying to intimidate me, and then he comes to my home with attitude, personality. But the biggest thing I see is the racism with Mylin. The individual, Lloyd Johnson, he's been a resident three times already for all the violations, and he's seen, all these violations were bogus, so Mylin wrote me a dismissal letter and brought it to my home. I mean, my daughter's sixteen years old, and she could have wrote a better dismissal letter than what he did. I mean, because he's been very rude and just harassing us. He goes by the house, videotaping my kids, what is that, Robert Ramirez, with another guy in the vehicle, they're passing by my home. I, I'm a classic car guy, my hobby is classic cars, nineteen thirties, forties, and fifties. I collect them. It's my business. I got a brand new RV on my lot, two thousand nineteen, I got a brand new Suburban, I got brand new cars and whatnot, and I got old cars. He wants to question me, where do I get all this from? Why do I got all this? That's my business. I pay my taxes, I work, my, my wife, she's a hardworking lady, she works for the Department of Children and Services, we got five girls and two boys, and my wife takes care of kids. I run the West Coast Division for Chikita Banana as the manager of the West Coast, so I, I work at night, I work at midnight, and I'm home by twelve in the afternoon. But I'm tired of this gentleman, Mylin, and I email him, and I send him messages, he doesn't get back to me, he doesn't respond, you know, and when he does respond, he responds with an attitude. I'm tired and I'm fed up of it, you know? He approached my house one time, he was parked outside for thirty minutes, when I came walking outside, he got off his car. He thinks he's a police officer, he thinks he's FBI or whatever, he sits in the damn car with air conditioner on and whatnot. Why don't he come and have the decency and knock on my door? You know? And he comes to the front of my house, and he identifies himself, I'm the city manager, and here's my card and whatnot, I just said, what, what are you doing here? He goes, all these banners, these banners you have up, you gotta take them down. My daughter, she just went to North Carolina, she went to the army, you know? I had banners out there, I got American flags hanging out there and whatnot, you know? Those are my rights. You know, he's violating my rights, you know? You guys appointed him, you guys needed him, you guys took him from La Puente, you guys brought him here to West Covina, that man is no good. He's just harassing people, harassing us for petty things. I got pictures, I got a car trailer, because I haul my cars, my classic cars, I go to car shows, so I got a car trailer, I parked right in my, front of my driveway, they passed by, they took a picture, and I got, I, I got, I got all the pictures. And he sends fifteen hundred dollar violation, the trailer is on my property, my trash cans are on my property, my neighbor across the street, he has his trash cans in the front of his garage, people down the street, they got their trash bins in front of their houses in the alleys and whatnot. And he's singled me out. Also, my pickup truck was stolen July thirteen on my wife's birthday, and right across the street, there was abandoned house with drugs and gang members and whatnot hanging out there, the PD never wanted to do nothing about it, they never stepped in it, I went over there, I got all those guys out of there, from Baldwin Park and Azusa, me and my brothers and my nephews, we went across street, you guys gotta go now, there'll be problems. I'm patrolling North Vincent right there, he knows about the issues, I've talked to Johnson all the time.
Very good, thank you, sir, okay, and we will try to investigate about your complaint.
But I need you guys to do something about it, you know?
Thank you so much.
You guys are council people, step up and do something.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much, okay? Okay, and next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Steve Bennett, followed by Elsie Messman.
Good evening, Council, thanks, Mark. So tonight, I got a couple things to, to talk about. First one, tonight you have document destruction on your agenda. Apologize, I don't remember what number that was, but I think it's near the top. In that, you have a staff report that does not list what you're actually destructing. So you have a document destruction of a lot of public documents, granted, probably within the legal aspect of it, but one of the things that's allowed is the public is allowed, I believe it's two weeks, to review that document, whatever those may be. The city did not publish that information in that staff report, so the, the public doesn't have any idea of what you're going to shred or get rid of. It's pretty tough as a resident to stay on top of some of the shenanigans that go on here at City Hall when they happen, when you guys don't let us know what you're getting rid of. So what you're holding, the two things I passed out, are two randomly pulled and searched through the history, previous document destruction staff reports, and if you'll notice, they have a quite extensive list of what was actually being destroyed. That's all we're asking, we're asking for some transparency here. So tonight, I don't believe that that resolution that you're trying to pass, or that you guys are gonna review, and can't say you're trying to pass it, is actually ready for you guys to make a decision on. I think staff needs to provide you a list of what's going to be destructed, so that the, the public can actually see and make a decision if they want to come and review those documents in the review period of fourteen days. So I ask that you pull that, I ask that you not make a decision tonight on that until we actually see what's going to be there. And I think that is consistent all the way back to the mid nineties, which is what one of these staff reports with our city clerk, Janet Berry, was still here. So this goes back twenty plus years of history of the council only allowing it when we seen the list. Second thing I want to talk about, it's already been alluded to tonight, and, you know, Tony, you, you're in the paper quoted today about wanting to start our own health department. First of all, I like the idea, I think it's awesome. I, I think it's great that we want to establish ourselves a little more independence from LA County. I find it ironic that you want to go to LA County Fire, or the possibility is there, but we want to go to our own health department, because we don't want LA County telling us what to do, it's just kind of, it's really interesting on the ironicness of that. But when you look at this, the issue I have is Pasadena has a fifteen million dollar budget for their health department. You guys gave twelve percent to our police and fire last year each, and that hasn't been rescinded. So maybe if we didn't do that, we might have some money to do a health department. Oh, but we did go back and ask the employees that didn't get a raise to give money up for six months, all of them, and, but we just passed a energy efficiency thing for three million dollars, so I don't know that we have the money there, because I don't know if we have a cash flow problem or not. My point is, is, man, I love the idea, Tony, I think it's a great idea. We're in the wrong city for that right now, because unfortunately, due to mismanagement of money, we don't have it. We don't have enough money to hire medical officials, even if we partner with other cities. And trust me, I want all of our small businesses open. I think that the rules that they've put out are absolutely ludicrous, I don't think anyone's getting infected enough from outdoor dining, I, I think that that's crazy. I think they're getting more infected from all the different things that are constitutionally protected, like protests and other stuff. So I, I'm in support of what you're trying to do, and I think our businesses need to stay open, I think we make, as a city without a health department, I think we make the decision to let our businesses stay open. I think we have the power to do that, we are our own municipality, and I think we make that decision. You guys as a council, let's step up, make a decision that we're going to allow them to stay open under certain conditions, the twenty percent, thirty percent, whatever it is, we don't need a health department to do that. Let's save ourselves some money, and let's save ourselves some headache, and, and let's find out if we can do that. But I'll tell you right now, due to some of the previous mismanagement, we don't have the money to do a health department, so if we can manage our money better, maybe we would have had it. And before I leave, Shoemaker's not here, Councilman Johnson, I won't be here next week, I don't think anyone will be, because we're gonna be probably shut down, but I wish you the best. And, you know, I know it's not your last meeting, you have one more, but I wish you the best. You've served your years, agree or disagree, you and I have been on both sides of that, but I wish you the best. Shoemaker's been on there for two years, Jessica, I'm sure you're listening, I wish you the best as well. It should be a fun next two years, those new council members, everyone's gonna love them for one day. And after that, just like the rest of you, they're gonna beat you up, just like, huh? Just like we all do, so I wish you the best, I hope you, hopefully you stay involved, hopefully Jessica stays involved, and I, I wish you guys the best. Have a great day, guys.
Thank you, Steve, thank you so much. Okay, and next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Elsie Messman, followed by Jim Grivage.
Mayor, council, staff, and everyone here tonight and at home. My name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina. Well, it looks like someone wants to get recognition for forty-one donated donations while you're still mayor, right? Does that mean that these meetings are gonna get shorter? I got a call from a West Covina resident, and he said, two down, three to go. Regarding the city's financial health review, we are the seventeenth worst, we were, the seventeenth worst city out of five hundred and forty-three cities in the city of California, and that was on October two thousand and nineteen. We have now slipped to ninth worst-run cities. This is not saying much about the council and staff, with such a sharp decline, another year and we'll be number one. I think this city needs a lot of help, and fast. Item number twelve, in my opinion, it would make sense to me if we need to prove that we have to run the city before we add a health department. Adding more responsibilities and judging from the past reports we are getting, it's not gonna get any better. So show some proof before you take more on more responsibilities. Item number six, regarding the building and safety consultants that were to replace the engineering department, saying that it would be cheaper than having a staff. As anybody questioned, is this being cost-effective? We are not only paying TransTech, but we're paying Wilmdom Pyramid Building and Engineers and Nichols Consulting Engineers, who is in charge of the oversight, since we don't have an engineering department? Anybody that knows anything about this city has either left, fired, or retired. This council seems to be having a problem with employees, looks like they want their own people, whether they're qualified or not. They have removed our manager, the police chief, the fire chief, the city attorney, just to name a few. We have at least five or more cases going to the Superior Court. This is costing the city a lot of money. In September, we spent forty, over forty-eight thousand dollars for former employees lawsuits. We also paid twenty-six thousand dollars so far for the fires chief's lawsuit, which is still ongoing. There was a three hundred and seventy-four thousand settlement paid to Bicep and three hundred and sixty thousand paid to Lawson and O'Brien for legal services. No wonder we don't have any money. This is getting out of hand, and the people of West Covina need to know. Since we are going to have a new investigator on council, I hope that she can find what's happening and stop all these lawsuits. The residents of West Covina should not have The residents of West Covina should not have to pay for the mistakes this council and the city manager has made. They should know better, and maybe if they had to pay the bill, then it would put a stop to it. In today's San Gabriel Valley Tribune, the mayor stated he didn't know how the city could find funds for the police and fire department. He forgot there was a 12% raise for both the police and fire. You have nobody to blame but yourself and the staff when we had no money. The city manager said he could find the money. Has he found the money? Maybe this would help. Magnifying glass. Thank you.
Thank you, Elsie. Thank you so much. Okay, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jim Grivage, followed by Matthew Smith.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Hello. I'd like the council to refer to this document that has been distributed, which is a chart of the last six years expenditures. As was already stated, West Covina's financial status has deteriorated. Two years ago, the city was ranked 17th worst in the state, and now the city is ranked ninth. That happened under this city council's watch. Today, the state auditor has published a report that states West Covina's ineffective fiscal management threatens its ability to meet its financial obligations and to provide city services. You may wonder why the city has gone from bad to worse. In simple terms, the answer is that expenditures have been rising rapidly every year. They have increased 30% in the last five years, which is an average of 6% a year. Revenue's actually been going up too, even though the city talks about not having enough money. It's been, it's gone up 20%. However, you notice there's the difference, 30% versus 20%. If you spend 2% more than you take in every single year, you're gonna go broke, and that's where the city's going. There are two primary sources for this problem. The first source is pensions. And I have to say, almost all of the pension costs are for public safety, fire and police, about 95% of it, because of their pensions are extremely rich. They actually get a huge raise every year, just in pension expenditures that the city's paying for them, much more than a salary increase. Second, the city has not managed its budget effectively. The auditor pointed out many cases, primarily firefighter overtime, and, as was already mentioned, legal expenses, huge overdrafts every year. Nothing has been done about it. That's terrible management, terrible oversight by the city council. Something has to be done. Nothing has been done. I have personally spoke on this issue 12 times over the last five years. Nothing has ever been done. What the city did do was lay off the lowest-paid employees of the city and saved a few pennies, and simultaneously gave people who make huge salaries and huge benefits a huge raise. Doesn't make any sense what you're doing. My recommendation on this subject is that you have a mechanism to deal with this state audit. It's called a finance and audit committee. The city has chosen not to have that committee meet. That's their job, to deal with these issues. I strongly recommend that the city council direct staff to ask the finance and audit committee to give you alternatives on what to do with this problem. The city isn't doing it. As the state auditor said, you are going from bad to worse, and you're gonna go broke, and you're gonna go bankrupt, and that's gonna cost millions of dollars that just flush down the toilet, because in effect, you have no wherewithal to deal with the real issue. And I please, I'm imploring you, stop doing nothing about this. Something has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Matthew Smith, followed by Les Lefroy.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Matthew Smith from FNS Food Services. We own Tamale Street, Scoop Street, and Bun Street, and I think a lot of you are familiar with those sites, but it's under the umbrella of FNS. We're on Channel 11 News this morning, and my partner spoke to them in regards to the idea of our own locally-based or regionally-based health department. And I wanted to come personally tonight to encourage that to happen. And a couple of things that everybody may not know, although some of you may. The businesses on Glendora worked very well with the city. The city owns a parking lot, and the city came up and put barricades in, loaned us trees for decorative purposes. FNS Food Services, we spent $2,000 on benches, tables, chairs, et cetera. So, and the city actually had a meeting with all the business owners there to discuss what the needs were, and they had actually two meetings with us. So the business relationships between the city of West Covina and the businesses are very good. You guys came in, got barricades, gave us permission to sit in the parking lot, and we came up and paid for the other expenses for it. So we, I mean, we definitely want to encourage what's been mentioned. Let me show you some challenges of working with LA County, and there's lots of them. I'm gonna give you three. We did a build-out with, through LA County for Scoop Street, and we hired an architect, and LA County Health Department has their rules, the city of West Covina has their construction rules, and they don't always coincide. So you need to get both parties together, compromise, discuss. It costs money to redo architecture plans, and we, me and my partner, will never, ever do a build-out again, working with LA County or a city, because it is extremely difficult to do. We may buy a restaurant, or an ice cream place, whatever, and come in behind it. We'll never do another build-out, you know? We didn't open Tamale Street for nine months. When COVID happened, all the health inspectors got pulled, sorry, got pulled off of new restaurant openings. We paid nine months of a lease, and we couldn't even open the facility. We got ticketed for karaoke night. Business picked up. Friday nights, we ran karaoke night. We were actually cited by LA County Health Department for having this, for outdoor entertainment. I'm not sure, they sent us a ticket, they wouldn't give us a ticket by hand. They sent us an email. We have to pay it, we've already paid it, and now we're appealing it. We're not sure where the health inspector started doing outdoor entertainment. If you guys came to us and said, "It's too loud, you can't meet," whatever it is, it's not food-related, but we got cited for it, and now we have to appeal it. And so did another restaurant who had an outdoor guitarist at the time. So my point isn't a complaint, because you're probably thinking like, "What does that have to do with me?" If we had our own health inspectors, city health inspectors, all of this could have been avoided. Under one roof, I could go to the building, the building commission, could be talking to the health department and say, "Okay, we have to, we work together and make sure this build-out happens." We could get you guys to come out on face-to-face conversations and say, "Give me one more inspection for Tamale Street," so we could open up and not pay nine months of lease while it sits empty. We could also, on karaoke, on something like outdoor entertainment, we could have this discussion. I'm not sure if you know how big the health department is in LA County. Those discussions don't happen. There is no face-to-face. I can't go to a table and say, "Hey, talk to me about outdoor entertainment. I need one inspection to open up a restaurant. Can you free somebody up?" Those conversations just don't happen. So we pay $5,000 a year for the three sites. I know there's lots of restaurants. Off the top of my head, it seems like it could be feasible under the right direction. And for FNS side of things, we're just encouraging you guys to look at that concept. And it could be a definite win-win, because the relationship's good between business and the city from the food industry, but we're fighting, you know, another entity to do services for the city and keep people employed and do all the stuff we all talked about. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Okay, next speaker, please.
Les Lefroy, followed by Herman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Les Lefroy. I've been a resident of West Covina for over 40 years. I represent the West Covina Senior Softball Group. We meet twice a week, Mondays and Fridays. We're just a group of guys, get together and pair up and play softball, okay? But here's the problem. There are teams coming in that are not authorized to use Cameron Park, and they're using Cameron Park. For example, on Saturday, I went by and I spoke to a couple of the players. "What city are you from?" One team was from Arlita, the other team was from Yobalinda. That was just the two teams on the field, okay? Other teams are waiting to play after these two teams. I went by on Sunday, asked, "Where are you, where are this team from?" One from Santa Monica, the other one was from Huntington Beach. This is every Friday, every Saturday and Sunday. They're making trash that we clean up on Monday, and nothing's being done, week after week. They don't have a permit, nor a waiver. If somebody were to get hurt, the city is liable. The city is liable, okay? Because they're coming in doing whatever they want to do. I spoke with Mike about this. Mike is my contact, and he's looking into it. I'm gonna give him time and see if there's something that's done, or something not done. I'm gonna have all the seniors, with the COVID, we can't all get in here, but I'll bring 100 guys down here from the city, and you guys will have to do something. Because this is ridiculous. This is ridiculous. They're using our city because they can't use their own city, and nothing's being done.
Understood.
Okay? And I've had it up to here.
I agree.
I live between, on Cameron, between Azusa and Highland Bay. Like I say, I've been here 40 years, and this is, this is, something has to be done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Herman, followed by Brian Tabatabai.
You know what's troubling? Troubling is knowing that not just this particular city, but a majority of cities have failed the trust of the public. And who do we blame? Can't blame someone who God hates for being a fucking homosexual.
Would you please be careful of your language?
Well, language here is not the issue, because I'm protected by the First Amendment.
But please don't swear around, okay?
Well, at times, there might be unpleasant, sharp attacks on the government. 42 U.S.C. 1983. And I will demonstrate the Bain Act and the Brown Act to its full capacity, whether you like my delightful words or not, because I'm gonna bring to the attention of not West Covina, but to every fucking city.
But would you?
Do your jobs and protect our workers. The gentleman who spoke before me about what you've done for his business and the businesses around West Covina, you failed. And why have you failed? Because you followed the same fucking direction like Eric Garcetti and that stupid asshole from Sacramento, Gavin Newsom.
If you do it again, I have no choice to shut it up, okay? Please.
Sir, I got five minutes, and you continue to interrupt me during public comment time.
Please be respectful, please.
Well, where does it say to be respectful in the color of the law? Where?
We have people over here, okay?
This is America, brother.
I know, but...
This is America.
Please don't swear, okay? Please.
The reason why I swear, because I'm fucking tired of this fucking system you have set up with those stupid bitch board supervisors, five of them, five of them. And the United States versus Baghdadi Zarian, what is troubling?
You know, I caught your mic, okay? I warned you three times, I'm so sorry. If you be respectful, I will let you finish, but if you continue to do it, insult my audience, my residents, I cannot do it, please. Okay, I'm sorry, your time's up, okay? Officer, officer, it's okay. I like, I like, okay, I let you finish, okay? Thank you so much. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Brian Tabatabai, followed by Sarah Love.
Hey, hey, welcome, Brian. Welcome to city council. You will be sitting over here, okay, in January, okay, 19, so welcome. Be careful what you wish for. You're going to sit with me.
There you go. Good evening, council. I'd like to begin by public comments by acknowledging the land and the native peoples to whom this land belongs as its original caretakers. This is the land of the Tongva Nations, and they are still here. We stand in solidarity with all indigenous people and their right to self-determination and justice. We commit to working toward the healing of the generational trauma, theft, and dispossession native peoples have faced and continue to face. The release of the state's audit is a sobering reminder as to the importance of acknowledging, but not the type of general "we inherited a bad situation" acknowledgement that often passes for critical thought and serious-minded policymakers. No, to acknowledge is to be intentional, to be specific, to name problems in order to create a comprehensive plan made up of specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, time-based goals that will allow for the analysis necessary to determine the combined results of our actions to ensure success. In a couple of weeks, I will have the honor of swearing in and serving the community of West Covina. of swearing in and serving the community of West Covina. I will have the opportunity to serve during a time when fundamental change is necessary. In nineteen ninety-one, Timothy Noster presented what we know as the Lipit-Noster Model of Complex Change. The Lipit-Noster Model identified six categories that must be present in order for complex change to occur successfully: vision, consensus, skills, incentives, resources, and an action plan. If any of these categories is missing, the organization fails. It is with this model in mind that I have chosen to speak tonight. According to Noster's, the lack of a vision leads to organizational confusion. What is the vision this council has articulated to city staff and the residents of West Covina? What are the long-term priorities set forth by this chamber? The vision is the why. It is our transparency. It is the base for every decision. It creates the reason for buy-in, for consensus. Without the trust that is built through outreach and consensus, this council will be unable to make the tough decisions the state auditor has recommended. What conversations does this council plan to have during public comments? How much work does the council plan to do in the public eye to regain the trust of residents? Is this council prepared for the negotiations that will be necessary to avoid bankruptcy? Will we have the discipline to demand data before we take a vote? Does this council have the skill to move all the stakeholders in the same direction? Does this council have the toughness and skill to stand up to public pressure and speak truth to residents, to the unions, to city staff, to each other? Or are our incentives someplace else? What drives this council? What are our incentives for sitting on that dais? Are we driven to do what's best for the residents of West Covina, or are our incentives tied to special interests? What trade-offs have we chosen to make? What time have we given to staff, to residents, to this chamber in order to make the best decisions? Because while we may not be able to produce millions more in the budget, we can dedicate the time on Tuesday nights, dedicate the time reading our staff reports, dedicate the time to create smart goals with the departments, dedicate the time to outreach to residents, and build a narrative and action plan together. While this audit was indeed sobering, it was made even more so by what I read this morning. In the midst of a financial crisis, in the midst of contemplating losing our fire department to the county, we find ourselves discussing the feasibility of creating a multimillion-dollar health department? Why? Will our scientists come to different conclusions? What will we do if they were to say we're to shut down? Why, when, why, when a vaccine seems imminent, are we having staff waste their time instead of creating the plan to solve the issues presented by the audit? We no longer need self-serving pats on the back. We need to serve.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, thank you so much, okay. Next speaker, please. Would you please? Okay, next speaker.
Our next speaker is Sarah Love.
Sarah, welcome back. Come up.
I'll leave right after this. All right, so I just came here to comment on eleven and twelve. Eleven is the parks. My kids use the parks. I hope you guys don't close them down again. I know LA County is tyrannical. I do agree with him. Don't worry, I'm not gonna say the F-word to get my point across, because my dad would smack me upside the head. But I, I do agree, whatever you can do to fight the county of LA, I want you guys to do it. I get we can't set up a health department. I mean, I'm in healthcare. I can't comment on a lot of things in healthcare because of my job. But whatever you guys can do to fight, to keep small business in, you know, whatever you can do. Maybe we can't do anything, but we gotta try. So, keep our parks open. We meet at the dog park. You know, we're not in each other's faces, so it's fine. And, and number twelve, definitely, whatever you can do to fight, and don't go to LA County Fire, because look at this crap we're dealing with now, with LA County Health Department. We don't want that. I mean, we don't want, I'm telling you, no. No more federal money. And one more thing that's been bothering me is you guys immediately voted on, like, DUI checkpoints. To me, it's like, what is the next checkpoint gonna be? Now it's DUI, then it's licenses. And that hurts poor people, and, you know, people that are trying to get their license and maybe can't. And by the way, don't, don't terrorize me, because I have a license insurance and all that. But there are some people that really work hard to try to do that. I think it hurts poor people. What's the next thing they're gonna demand with federal grant money? So, think about it a little bit more before you guys just, "Okay, it's for safety." Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you so much. And next speaker, please.
That's our last speaker, Mayor.
This is the last speaker. This is all the excitement we have tonight. Okay, JD, you want to come over here to say something? Oh, my God, you really coming. I in trouble. Be careful how I wish forward. Okay, come. Hey, I have all night, okay, for you. Be careful, DJ. Okay, you don't want to hurt yourself. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Happy New Year, guys.
Happy New Year. And Merry Christmas, first.
And Merry Christmas, too. Ms. Lopez, congratulations. You're up to bat. After today's report, and I'm sure you read, you're probably wishing you can go next time around for that mayorship. But speaking about that report, I have a question. Are we trying to go bankrupt? I'm not that bright, honestly, but I can read. And I read that we've used up half of the reserves, a little more than half of the reserves, ten million dollars. Fifty percent of our reserves has been spent. It talks about a lot of mismanagement, procurement, process, missing. So, you know, you have to wonder what's going on. Mayor, before you leave, I'm hopeful that you will at least address this report tonight openly. I think this idea of health department, like Mr. Bennett said, it's a good idea, but it's like the Roy Jones, Mike Tyson fight. It's exhibition. It's not reality. You can't do it, you know, between tonight and when we call an end to this COVID epidemic, because it probably won't be an end to it. You don't know what the cost is gonna be. So, it's, it's, it's a lot of grandstanding, as far as I'm concerned. Well, I can understand the enticement from small business to want that to happen. I hate to disappoint them. It's not gonna happen during this epidemic. No health department in West Covina is gonna come to the rescue. That's not a reality for small business. So, I hope, I still got two fifty-eight. Hold on, Will. Hold on, I know you're getting ready to throw me out. But honestly, as I started out, I'm thinking that council, not the city manager or his staff, after all, they're, they're the ones running the city. But you've been charged through the vote, the voters of West Covina, to look out for the residents, those that vote and those that don't vote. So, you really need to step up, because I think this report has vindicated the residents, certainly those that have come down here, Ms. Poetris, Mr. Grivich, and all of those that have come up and said, "You know what? We're spending too much. You guys are turning the city upside down, and you're not telling anybody why you're doing it. I know you're tired of the twelve percent hearing that, and I don't blame you. That's gotten old." But you've made all these changes. You failed to tell the residents why. It's come back to bite you in this report. This report clearly indicates that all those actions that you took and you denied residents a reason for taking it are now cited on this report as mismanagement by city council and city staff. You need to at least be honest with the residents and provide some transparency, because honestly, I feel that the residents are just, besides being up to their, their neck in this COVID restrictions, they're really tired of asking city council to at least allow them to participate. We had an audit committee. You completely defunct that committee. It hasn't met. Instead of using it as some sort of a launching pad to create a report that would have satisfied what the state asked for and what this body had offered to, to provide, you shut them down. I know you sit there and you get tired of hearing us, but the truth is that this is not just coming from us. It's coming from the state now. And it is almost a carbon copy of what the residents told you. Thank you.
Thank you, DJ. Okay, next speaker. Any taker? None? Okay, I'm gonna close our communication. Thank you so much for all the participation. Okay, we are going to the, okay, would you, okay, I know that our city manager had surgery yesterday, so our assistant city manager, could you help to, okay, maybe respond some of, the first one is coenforcement, okay, the gentleman talking about some kind of harassment, so maybe we can check into it, okay? And some kind of, okay, Steve talking about the document, and we will talk about health department at the last, okay? And we're talking about, okay, auto-dining thing, this is the health department. Cameron Park, okay, we want to make sure, okay, address to senior day, why we allow some outsider to use the Cameron Park. So, maybe you could address some of the issue. Go ahead.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, there were a number of speakers talking about the county health department, and as you've noted, Mayor, that will be discussed. There's also an item on the agenda, which I believe is number eleven, which talks about park use. I know that's an issue that the mayor pro tem has brought up, and we do have a full report on that. And I think we'll, I think the residents.
Yeah, I think they're particularly talking about one group, okay, and they continue to use.
Correct.
If they are illegally using, we need to stop that. I think that is the problem, is how we enforce if the people illegally using our park without permission. I think that is our gentleman, our residents are talking about. And I think maybe, okay, we can have our finance director to explain later on, okay, about, okay, the audit committee thing, okay, maybe we can have some of the explanation, okay? And I think they have a lot of information, misinformation, and plus, some of the data is from the previous administration. But no matter what, we are willing to see how to improve, okay, from the state and from our local resident, okay, their speech. But go ahead.
Yes. As was noted, the audit report was released today, and it does have some findings. And as you've noted, Mayor, it did look backwards in time to talk about what has happened in the past. I think it's worth noting that general fund revenues have actually increased this year, largely because the community and the city council approved the lease revenue bond, which significantly lowered the city's pension obligation costs. I know Mr. Grivich has talked about that. But the city, the net present value savings through that action that the city took was fifty-two million dollars in savings.
Is that possible, we can, our finance director to kind of explain, since she has all the detail? Is that possible, can have you to kind of, maybe we need to have rebuttal with explanation, including all this data, okay, from the city point of view, from your point of view, since you are the professional and you've been doing this for us. I want to thank you, because I know you're working very hard, trying to help our city clean up all the history, clean up all the bad thing before, and including the numbers. So, we need to kind of clarify some of the issue that people addressed, sound like they're taking about this nothing but, okay, all the new policy, but a lot of information is from previous. So, maybe you can, okay, give us, go ahead.
You're speaking in particular about the state audit.
Correct.
Okay, so the state audit came out today. It did have several findings in it. A lot of that data was looking, like you said, backwards in time. And there have been, since...
It's seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, and nineteen, right?
Well, part of eighteen, nineteen, but even before that, I mean, they went way back to, like, two thousand fifteen.
You go to two thousand fifteen?
Yeah, and some of the contracts and...
Two thousand fifteen is before my time. I didn't get elected till the end of two thousand fifteen.
Correct. And as, you know, they, we had some, I disagree with some of their things, because they put findings in there that I feel have, we've taken, city manager and I've taken corrective action for, in, like, the purchasing and...
They have a new number, for example, our assistant city manager talking about our reserve increase.
No, our reserves have decreased.
Increased. No, you say increase.
I believe I said revenues, Mayor.
Oh, revenue, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. How about reserve? Okay, they have an issue about reserve, too, based on the report.
One of the things, I actually called the state yesterday, and I talked to the principal auditor there, Linus Lee, at the state auditor's office, and I asked him why we slid from seventeen to nine. And the biggest reason, and I shared that with council member Letty Viato, that they weight the general fund reserves, there's like ten risk categories, and they, they, but they're weighted. So, the general fund reserves going down is weighted thirty percent, where some of the others may be ten percent or five percent.
The scolding.
And so, that's the biggest reason that it's gone down, and it has gone down. However, after issuing the bonds this year and having that savings, we expect in the current fiscal year, twenty twenty-one, that we're gonna replenish some of those reserves, and it's gonna be a continual thing over the next several years. We need to really work on replenishing those reserves. And we're gonna be working on, city manager and I and the management team will be working on a corrective action plan with the findings. I didn't get a chance totally to read it word for word. I skimmed over it. I already had seen a draft, so I kind of knew what was in it already. But we'll be issuing a corrective action plan by January thirty-first. We have sixty days, so it's got to be very specific. They want timelines, when certain things, what our plan is to fix certain things, who's gonna be doing it, when it will be done, and so on and so forth. So, it's gonna be over the next, at least several months, if not years.
Yeah, I think it's important for, okay, and how to, okay, do the improvement by some of the finding. I think this audit, okay, is something is healthy for us to look into, not only, okay, the history, but at the same time, how we look in the future, okay? And hopefully, we can continue to correct, okay, our, okay, previous, okay, mistake, and hopefully, continue to cut the expenditure and continue to see we can continue to improve our result. Yes, Mayor Poten, go ahead.
So, Mayor, when I saw that audit report, I did send you a quick email, because I did want explanation. I just want to make it clear to these residents that I know sometimes they hit, "Oh, this current council, the report is twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen." That was before our time. Even though we came in swearing in on two thousand eighteen, we started two thousand nineteen. A lot of the things, it took many previous, previous councils and previous administration throughout those years has been bringing it down. We can't fix it overnight. We are trying. And then I know I did send you an email to prepare a report in regards to the audit and the corrective actions and everything that we are gonna be taking, which will be presented out, you know, soon to the public, so that you can see what the city is doing. But I wanted to thank you for working on that, and I know it's a lot of information, a lot of things, but thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Poten. I think no matter is from the previous or current, if they have a mistake, we have to correct it. So, we want to continue to improve. So, no matter it's happened to previous time or our time, no matter what, okay, I think we need to continue to see the problem and face the problem and fix the problem, okay? I think for the healthy of our financial, okay, situation, we need to look into detail, okay? I think this is what residents want, okay? And I think this is what council wants, okay? I think we have a trust in you, because you've done this for such a long, long time. And I know you're really working very hard, even weekend, and try to help us. So, so, so let's continue to work on the improvement and try to work on a, a policy. continue to work on the improvement and try to work on a policy and the system, okay, and we can, okay, overcome. I think the point is this, including residents, no matter the criticism, I think the constructive criticism, we need to accept those criticism, okay, and continue to see the improvement. And we can have some input, and but we can have some, okay, and list, kind of list out to what we can do and this and that, and what we can do cut our expenditure. I think couple thing they talk a lot is about overtime, and talk about pension. I think there's a couple thing we need to address, how we, okay, approach all those very difficult issue, okay, but need to be addressed, because if we don't do it, we in trouble because we continue to waste the money, okay, for that, okay. But I think this is, we're going to leave for a next time to in more detail, but please, okay, kind of, we prepare for all this, what they are finding and what we can do, and how can we improve, and send to the public, okay, have everybody to inspect and review, and see what we can do, and continue to improve our city finance. Okay, I think no matter what, okay, I think all the city in this pandemic are in trouble, okay, because income not coming in, okay, and you have expenditure expenses to continue, we have to pay. So I think, okay, everybody, all the city are facing, okay, this very tough challenge. But I think I have a confidence, okay, under our staff, especially our finance director, with your experience can help us overcome. And any other city council want to address otherwise, I will, yeah, go ahead.
I'd just like to thank you guys for pointing that out. There's a lot of the things in this report really highlight what has occurred in the past, not really under our watch. But as our mayor said, despite that, we're here willing and ready to meet that head on and continue fixing what we've started to fix. Thank you, guys.
It's an opportunity for us to make West Covina the great city that it was.
Thank you so much. We love the city. We love, okay, and, okay, the improvement, we really respect our staff. I saw it in my eye, okay, about how hard you guys working, okay, try to improve the thing. But we have to work together, okay, with our resident, no matter how they criticize, I think they love the city, okay, they're willing to input, spend time, review everything. Jim's over here, email everything, and try to help out, okay. We really appreciate Jim, okay, to see everything, and we need to continue, okay, to look into it, okay, and hopefully, okay, we can help, okay, and improve. And again, I want to finalize, I'm very confident we will overcome. Thank you so much, appreciate.
Good point.
I do have a question.
One second, Jessica. Despite our differences, I think it's a very good point you make. I think even when we disagree, everyone in the room, I think, or I hope, our main objective is make the city better. So despite our differences, thank you all for being here.
Okay, Jessica, go ahead.
I just had a quick question about the process, because I was surprised when I reviewed the report earlier today that it did not include a law from the city. Why is that?
So if I understand your question, Jessica, you were wondering why the city didn't have a rebuttal. That's what the corrective action plan will be. The city manager and I were the two people that reviewed that draft report. We had to clarify any what we considered inconsistencies, our mistakes, or anything that they were misinformed about that we could clear up. And they changed, did make some changes to the report, but our time for rebuttal is going to be the corrective action plan. And to set up, like I said, timelines, and who's going to be responsible for what, and what we plan to do, and when it will be done. And the state, we will have to check back in with them every six months and tell them where we're at in that process. It's not just going to be, prepare this corrective action plan, sit it on the shelf, and wait five more years for the auditors.
No, we want to continue to improve. Jessica, I have a more question?
Yes, because I'm aware of the process of how this works, the corrective plan, and the sixth month, and that's why I was curious, because usually you have the initial interview, they give you some concerns, you respond to them, they prepare their final report, they give you about ten days to respond, and usually that response, you know, you have the things you agree on, usually the response on things you don't agree with is included in the final report, or not just the corrective action. That's why I was asking, did we miss the deadline on responding scene, or have they just fixed the process? Or did we choose not to give a response and move on to the corrective action plan?
We did respond to them, and they made the changes to the report, and that was the process that was presented to us. It's a different group than was here last time, so I don't know if maybe the previous process was done differently. I can't respond to that. I only know what occurred here with this audit.
For the clarification.
Okay, okay, thank you, Jessica. Okay, and again, okay, let's work on the, okay, the detailed plan and see how we can improve at the same time. And what the city want is make sure our financial, okay, situation is healthy, okay, and you're confident, right? See, hey, our city treasures very confidence about our, hey, if you confidence, speaking to I see all everything and covering what happened, I'm very confident too. I think our city is doing great. Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate. Okay, and we are going, are you going to have a more response from some of the issue? And don't forget, regarding the Cameron Park, we want, okay, Mike Chrisa to make sure, okay, and we don't have any misuse, okay, by somebody. So anyway, we check into it. What else?
Correct. I believe that topic will be covered in item number 11. I think that really concludes most of the comments that people raised, Mayor, and if-
Okay, and then we move to, okay, and the city manager report, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. Just got a couple of items tonight. The first one is Small Business Saturday, which took place last Saturday. It happens every year, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and you can see here the number of local businesses that participated. It really does encourage people to frequent local businesses, particularly during these more difficult times. This is about the sixth year that the city's participated in this, and it grows every year in success. The next slide is talking about, we've got three upcoming toy drives. This is the time of year when we all know that the need is high, and this is first toy drive that's done Spark of Love. The next toy drive is one that Assemblywoman Rubio is sponsoring. And then the third toy drive is a toy drive which is hosted by the city's police department and the K-9 toy drive. The next slide is, again, reinforcing the concept of shopping local, not just on Small Business Saturday, but year round, and we continue to encourage people to do that. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, and if you have no other question, I'm going to move on to the consent calendar, okay, and I remember councilman Castellano want to pull number six, and I will pull number eight, and to discuss, okay. You want to, what? So I'm going to move, if you want to pull anything, Mayor Protem? No, 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 you want to pull anything? You want to pull any item?
Yes.
Which one? You want to pull number three? Wow. So number three, okay, and which one? Ten? No, eleven, no, ten and eleven is not a consent calendar. Let's, no, you only have a three. Yeah, yeah, okay, ten and eleven, that is, okay, probably, okay, we're going to discuss, okay, consent calendar to nine, one to nine. So you're going to pull three, okay, and, okay, councilman Castellano put number six, and I put number eight. So, okay, and I'm, okay, who's going to move the motion to approve, okay, consent calendar one, two, four, five, seven, and nine?
Mr. Mayor, I move the motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Castellano, roll call, please.
Councilman Costelanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye, with a no on four.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viato.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye, okay, and motion approved, five zero beside the number four is a four one. Okay, and let's go to consent calendar number three, okay, consideration of destruction document. Okay, go ahead, okay, Mayor Protem.
Well, for me, I just wanted to know what documents would be destroyed. I also want to know, like, the years. I do understand that you have the retention, which I'm, you know, glad to see that they're not going to destroy the most important things, which you do list on your code, but those, that's my concern, my question, sorry.
I believe our assistant city clerk will be able to answer those questions.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are not asking for anything to be destroyed in this staff report. What we are asking for is for the mayor and council to allow the departments to follow the retention schedule and destroy documents as needed. Our retention schedule was actually updated in 2018, so that what was referenced is a little bit outdated. What is in the staff report is the new retention schedule, which was updated in 2018. And what we are asking this council to do is allow departments to follow state law, get authorization from the city attorney's office, as well as the department head, and follow, excuse me, follow state law and destroy documents in a streamlined process.
And with that, I know we received, like, previous agendas and stuff that came in. Would it be similar when that day does occur, we'll do similar?
We would not go to council with this resolution. So we're asking council to let, we would not be going to council to destroy documents any further. We would be doing them at the department level with the city attorney signing off on it, as well as the department head and my office as the overseer of the documents.
No, I understand that, but I mean, the, these samples that we were given in today, and I mean, I know that this was, like, dated in 2014.
Correct.
When that day comes, will you be doing the same thing?
No, we will not be coming back to council.
No. Well, was this given to council back then?
Yes, that was given to council back then. That's what the retention schedule requested at that time. When the retention schedule was updated in 2018, that language was no longer in the retention schedule.
I mean, I'd like to see the breakdown, if that's a possibility, because I want to know what exactly, and I think the residents would like to know what that is.
So the retention schedule does have the dates of everything that is, when we're allowed to destroy documents?
Okay, I understand, but I don't see it, and I'd like to see that.
We're not asking for anything to be destroyed at this time.
I understand, but at that time, when we do have that, will that be shown and will that be given to be shown, to be seen?
Not with- Mr. Mayor, we can provide a list of when we do destroy the documents. We could provide a list to council, maybe in the city manager's report, or just provide it to you in the weekly city manager update. We'll let you know what was destroyed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I, okay, any other question? No, do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion moved by Councilman Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilman Castellano, a roll call, please.
Councilman Costelanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viato.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye, and a motion approved, five zero. Then we move to, okay, item number six. Okay, Councilman Castellano, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd like to bring TransTech up and have them give us some information about their proposal.
If I may very briefly, Mayor and Council, as they're coming up, just kind of talk about the process that staff went through in order to make this recommendation. The city did circulate a request for proposal for new building services. We received six proposals from highly qualified firms. Those proposals were reviewed by staff. Turned out that the deciding factor was really cost effectiveness. TransTech does currently provide services for us in the city engineering realm and public works realm. There are some economies of scale by having them also provide building services, but we did go through a process in order to make this recommendation. And I know that Melissa is here, as well as a couple of other representatives from TransTech, to go through their presentation.
Yeah, go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I first want to wish you guys a happy Thanksgiving, and also hope the residents, as well as your loved ones, are all healthy and well during this time. On behalf of TransTech, we're honored to be here, and we thank you for the consideration to be considered for building and safety services. I'm Melissa Demirsey, and I'm one of the project managers and civil engineers from Cal Poly Pomona, civil engineering degree background, and I am, I help facilitate our municipal services in our building department. With me today, I have Ahmad Ansari, our contract principal, as well as Dennis Tarango, another principal at TransTech, and also our chief building official, and Ali Kehier, president of TransTech. And we are all here to answer any questions that you may have. We did prepare a PowerPoint presentation that's kind of a summary highlight of our proposal, and really what we wanted to focus on is what is unique about TransTech, what's unique about the services that we can offer in the building and safety department. So I'll quickly go over the proposal. You know, we are an expert firm. We were founded in 1989, so we've been in business for over thirty years, and we provide services to over fifty agencies currently, in a broad range of multidisciplinary services, including building and safety, as well as city engineering. We're known in our industry for being cost effective and have a very customer service and customer care approach to everything that we facilitate and do in our client cities. We have extensive regional and local experience, specifically in local area to West Covina, as well as in LA County. In fact, we are also under contract with LA County as one of their qualified firms providing building and safety services to the county of Los Angeles as well. Many of our staff members do serve on various ICC committees, which is the governing committee for building and safety certifications and qualifications. And what's unique is we have the ability now during this pandemic to really have an innovative approach to virtual services, in terms of how we can provide that to cities in the building and safety department. And we've continued to provide these services in many of our cities during the pandemic. We also provide fire plan check services. Mainly what we do do is we have implemented electronic online plan check review portals for client cities. And what this allows is for applicants that come in, they can easily, if counter is closed or city hall is closed, to the public, they're able to go on to a virtual calendar, make an appointment, and in real time, have a face-to-face counter meeting with their plan checker directly right then and there. They're able to go over all of the plan review items in detail, go over all of the questions and corrections to streamline the process. And we found that this is really important because it demonstrates the city is there to help the applicant get to that final permit, get to that construction for their project. Additionally, you know, customer care and total quality management is intertwined with TransTech and with services of building and safety. A lot of the times, building and safety is the first interaction an applicant has with the city. So our customer service is the utmost important. And we start by working with applicants early on in their plan review process, to streamline their plans, to make sure that their plans are efficient, to work with them through the corrections. We provide detailed lists of corrections, including referencing the code if there is a non-compliance issue, and we work closely with the applicants to address those issues. And then overall, really what this does is it helps demonstrate that the city is there to help, and it reduces the number of the plan review process, allows the applicant to obtain the permit much sooner, and allows our inspection team to go out and be able to properly inspect that project. Also, all of our telephone calls, emails are returned within twenty-four hours. We pride ourselves in our same-day response motto. And really, our goal is to be a partner with the city, and we always strive to enhance the city's image, public trust and reputation, to be the most desirable city to live and conduct business in. I wanted to go over briefly some of the benefits of having a firm provide a dual role, where it's building and safety as well as engineering. You know, setting the conditions of approvals for both off-site and onsite improvements allows for more effective coordination, interdepartmental coordination. We have that knowledge of West Covina on the engineering side, and we frequently- We have that knowledge of West Covina on the engineering side, and we frequently interface with the building and safety side as well. During the building plan checks for onsite and offsite improvements that may involve public works improvements, our team can coordinate these quickly and these efforts simultaneously throughout the process. And overall, having a dual role leads to overall cost efficiency because of the familiarity with both sides. It results in more efficient and quicker turnaround times and is a more cost effective approach. Another thing is the overlap of the plan check and permit issuance process will be supervised by the TransTech team under the department director. And we're able to utilize that same virtual aspects and electronic platforms where it's simply a link that we would work with IT to have on the city website, where applicants simply click on the link, schedule the available times, and they're interfaced directly with a plan review. And what this allows is for complex projects that may require electrical, plumbing, mechanical, energy, structural, plan review, we're able to quickly get those expert plan review people on that call and resolve the item right then and there. So it really eliminates a lot of the frustration that sometimes applicants may have during that process, and we're able to have a quicker plan review turnaround time. Also, we're really proud that during this pandemic, our efforts of the virtual capabilities on the building and safety side was highlighted in the Insight Magazine that was published by American Public Works Association. I had provided the article for you as reference. Additionally, we did do a community engagement in the city of West Covina where we did it virtually. It was right when the pandemic hit. And those efforts were also recently highlighted in the Insight Magazine. Really, we've re-envisioned our service and staffing approach. For us, customer service, responding to the applicants, providing the best possible service to the city, allowing those applicants to go through the plan review process, to go through the inspection process in an enjoyable way is our goal. So our staffing structure and organization is re-envisioned with the greatest responsiveness, easily accessible to the city residents, development community, and the public. And, you know, our presence is on a, and accessibility is on a full-time basis to the city, again, using our virtual building and safety counter calendar, as well as in person. And we are excited, you know, to share that this transition that we've done in many of our cities, doing what was once an in-person service during the pandemic to virtually, has been a great success in many of the cities that we serve. So some of the cities that we have dual role responsibility, where we are their contract city engineer, as well as their building and safety services provider, are City of Alhambra, City of Temple City, City of Commerce, City of South Almonte. We also additionally provide building and safety services for City of Downey, South Pasadena, Bell, Azusa, Monterey Park, as well as the county of Los Angeles. And we have some highlighted, some various large, complex building and safety related services. And another thing is we don't see ourselves as just a consultant, just a building and service, building and safety or engineering consultant. We truly see ourselves as an active member of the communities that we serve. And we have a special program that we call CBE, Community Benefit Enhancement. And it's our commitment to the cities that we provide services to, that we will support the city. We will host youth workshops, we'll get involved with helping, you know, influence students to pursue a career in STEM, et cetera. So these type of services, or these type of community benefit enhancements is something that we offer to the city and that we will continue to do for West Covina. And for us, really, the biggest thing is our references. We've included reference letters from multiple cities that I had listed earlier that we're currently providing services to by department directors, as well as city managers. So we encourage you to read them. And my team and myself are here to answer any questions you have. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Castellano.
Thank you for the presentation. Despite, well, I think it's very cool that you offer virtual services, and that's very important right now during the pandemic. But despite that, if an applicant would like to bring, you know, plans in person, are you gonna, are you planning on staffing someone here at city, city hall?
Absolutely. Let me, I'm going to actually refer to Dennis and Ali, who can further, or Ahmad, to further explain our staffing level physically at city hall? Absolutely.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Our approach is to maintain the same staffing level as we currently have. We actually have a transition team on top of the existing staffing level we're going to provide to kind of evaluate the services that are, are being provided and look at opportunities to provide better services in person as well. So the virtual services are in addition to in-person services.
About the plans, that's good, but would you guys commit to keeping the plans in-house in, in the building? One thing that, that I've heard about in other cities, sometimes when the plans leave the building, is that anything could happen. They could get forgotten in a trunk, lost, put in whatever. Would you guys be able to do that? Keep everything here, especially since this move would have, you know, both building and safety and engineering? Can we make that happen all here under our roof?
So a, a certain level of the plans, typically the, the more simple plans, are going to be reviewed in-house. With the advent of the electronic plan review portal or platform that we're going to implement, a lot of that doesn't necessarily have to be here because it's virtual. And a lot of the expertise in those plans, the electrical engineers, mechanical and plumbing engineers, structural engineers, those are probably best used off city property, just because it's cheaper to do that for the city. We can provide a lot more experts at a very cheaper rate, not having them all stay here in the city. So a structural engineer doesn't have to stay here and wait for a structural plan. He can be off-site and review those at any time. But we will keep a certain level of plans onsite. The, what we see with electronic plan check portals is that the, the hard copy plans that get submitted are reduced because of the efficiency of the plan review process electronically and the convenience people can submit at any time. They can submit in the middle of the night because that portal's always open. So they take advantage of that.
That makes sense, and I'm sure a lot of people will, but definitely I would like anyone who wants to submit on paper to, to have them checked here.
Absolutely.
Because our, you know, our goal obviously is efficiency and customer service. We've seen that promise in the past, and it wasn't always delivered. Definitely, I can't emphasize enough, customer service is going to be critical. I, even I've had bad experiences when they didn't know it was me. So we, we can't have that. Everyone should be treated equally, fairly, professionally. And in terms of speed, that, that's why I'm making the request to keep everything in-house. I'll move on from that, but let's see here. Yeah, and one thing I'd like to see is really a strong effort to try to, then you touched on this in the presentation, approve as much as we can over the counter. That would be important because I've also heard not-so-efficient stories about things that have occurred in the past. So what, what can you say about approvals over the counter?
So, once again, having a, a virtual appointment calendar allows for access to a plan checker that can be either in-house or virtually. So people don't have to wait in line or worry about the city being open. They can actually have a, a over-the-counter plan review from their office or from their house. So our, our goal is always to provide quick, efficient, customer-friendly services. We do it very successfully in a lot of surrounding cities, and we're going to bring that approach to the city as well.
I, I would be holding you guys to that because I've also heard that before, and sometimes, you know, I get stories that come back to me about just sometimes the answer being flat-out no, when the answer is not so much no, but a creative approach. What can you say about, what, what would you guys do to really make the answer yes to businesses, residents, and builders as much as possible?
Actually, I speak about this quite a bit. In building and safety, we're pretty fortunate. Our, our answer is almost never no. It's, this is the way you can get it done. So our, our job is to help customers find that way to get it done. The building code actually doesn't ever say you can't do something. It says if you do it, you have to do it this way. And our job and our approach is to help customers kind of usher them through the process. You know, we, we do this on a daily basis, so we're experts at it. And our job is to give them that, our expertise and help them, you know, reach their goal of obviously building something or obtaining the permit.
Okay. And, well, I'll have a few more questions for, for our city staff, but would anyone else like to ask them any questions?
Any other question from the, okay, okay, I, I want to follow, okay, Councilman Castellano. Okay, I think two issue, I think the council and the city care the most, customer service and the cost. Okay, how much going to cost to have this done? Okay, cost and how much between the city, okay, and the TransTechs? Okay, what is the, okay, cost city to pay your guy? Will be very expensive or very good price? Okay, I think this is something, okay, is important to us, that we need to have a very fair and very, okay, cost efficient, okay, let city can, okay, get a, okay, share at the same time, customer, okay, get a good service. So I think this is two thing, okay, we want from you. And I think I, we send, okay, a suggestion from our local contractor, okay, and, okay, to send up, what is the suggestion? That what kind of obstacle you went through before? And how to improve, okay, with, okay, under our new, okay, company with a new policy to make sure that people will get a service? For example, you say after plan check and how you can meet with them so they can do all the correction, then, okay, you can resolve this issue right then back and forth because time is money for all the builder, for all the contractor, for all the project. So we want to make sure that thing happen. So at the same time, the inspection, okay, how the inspection can work with, okay, okay, the project? How soon, how fast? Okay, and because my understanding, the complaint is before, when we have in-house, if we before three o'clock, we make a, okay, they make a, okay, request, the next day, our city inspector will show up. Okay, but previous, okay, or current is not happening. So we want to know how fast, how good, okay? And the promise that you can serve, okay, and our customers or our builder, our resident when they need that inspection? Okay, I just asked a couple of questions. Go ahead.
So I, there's many ways that we can provide efficient service. I think what, what you're talking about is how do we provide efficient service?
I'm just asking you, okay, if the before three o'clock, okay, this, this is very simple, okay? And if people, okay, make a request, are you going to, can you show a next day?
Absolutely. Our, our goal is always to do next day inspections.
So not going to be next week, Monday, or next week, Tuesday, because you shy of staff?
Exactly. You know, we're lucky enough to have over 100 staff members. Our, our responsibility is, is to the public and to the applicants.
Alan?
Our, our goal is to do next day inspections.
So next day, what is the latest hours they can order so they can get a next day inspection?
Typically, what works best for us, the city closes typically around five, 5:30. We like our inspectors to schedule their inspection route to have it available before the end of the day. So.
You might be have the post that the what is the last hours for people to request next day? Okay, four o'clock, five o'clock, three o'clock? So, so people will understand if you exist that time, maybe you don't get next days because, so you need time to book, okay, and people to go.
Right, and informing the public is important. Typically, on the permit job card, it gives that information.
And so, so you promise can be next day in the, maybe before four o'clock if they, huh? Four o'clock, you say four o'clock? That's feasible for you, four o'clock?
Four o'clock seems reasonable, gives us enough time to schedule for.
So we will post, okay, before four o'clock, you can serve the, okay, send the inspector next day? So you can see, because, okay, otherwise, okay, how about Friday? What happened to Friday? If people, okay, request, okay, Fridays, can they do virtual with you since our city now open? Okay, are you going to open Friday?
We haven't discussed opening an extra day, but we can definitely discuss.
Because if you don't do that, then it would be Monday. So Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, there's three, four days. Yeah, let me finish, please. Okay. Okay, so, so another thing, okay, and that will be, another thing will be, when you send the inspector out, okay, and then, when you send the same inspector with same project, otherwise the problem, that's continuity issue. Where you, okay, inspector, okay, have a correction, and then next inspector come in, then we add more inspection, it will make, okay, request more correction. Okay, and then people really don't know who to follow to because supposedly you should be continuing. So would you please answer that question?
So to me, that, that goes back to management. It, it's up to the building official to make sure that continuity with inspectors and communication between inspectors is happening. So I, I've been building official, where we, I've had more, multiple building inspectors, and we have meetings about continuity. How are you making this call? How are you making this call? When you leave, I, I train my building inspectors, when you leave, you pretend like you're never going to be back. So the information that you leave is, is detailed and concise. So anybody, you know, it happens, you can't send the same inspector sometimes after, after he's been there. You have to spend, send a different inspector, and he has to have his communication to the next inspector so he understands. So we, we have meetings, internal meetings, departmental meetings to.
I understand, I just want to make sure the continuity is, okay, there, okay? Because the problem, a lot of time for the, okay, the owner or for the builder is you send the inspector show up, they write down, the inspector write down the correction, okay, and they did the correction, and next time, when another inspector come, went over there, and then they, we inspect everything, they put more, okay, correction, okay? And that is the major issue because you, you need to have always, okay, the same thing. If they already have been inspected by your company, okay, and shouldn't add more, it's like you only have three left, and the new inspector show up, then you have another 20, two pages. So you could scare out of our owner. So that's the complaint coming from. I just want to share with you what we receive, what the complaint, you have to avoid potentially this issue. This is a major issue. You cannot have no continuity.
I, I see that as a management issue, and it's my responsibility to make sure that the continuity between inspectors and the communication is there. So I, I take that personally. Every inspection, if you look at the building code, every inspection is done under the direction of the building official. So I see that as my responsibility to make sure that, that, those inspectors communicate well.
I, I remember we talked about the previous, okay, company, they're talking about, they even called online request, okay, for inspection or this and that, and then you can service, okay, through online, okay, or through, through your virtue, okay? And then in that way, okay, because what I'm talking about is time is money for a lot of owner because the weather and this and that, delay, it will be delayed more than one week. So to, so, so if, if, if we can do it, for example, Friday, Saturday, okay, of course, possible the cost will be higher due to, okay, you want to request somebody work on that weekend. But where you provide this kind of service, let so-called, they just want to get it through. So because when you do construction, it's one layer to another layer, to another layer, to another layer. If one layer delay, then everything delay, and then some, some, you cannot finish your project. Makes sense?
Yes.
So why you handle this situation?
We could definitely work with staff to see if, if inspections will be requested on Fridays and, or possibly weekends. Obviously, it's, it's, for us, you know, it's overtime, we'd have to pay. We definitely work with staff to see if that's.
If, if, what I'm saying is if this is request for weekend inspection due to some issue, okay, possible the charge will be higher, like overtime. It's as long as the builder willing to pay for it. If they need a service, they willing to pay the overtime so they can save their project in the due time, due to the layer to another layer, the cement truck, this and that, not layer there, we have a contract. If you don't do this time, they're not going to have a delay for another week or two weeks or even longer, right? So you guys should understand, during the construction, they have a lot of potentially surprise, but time is the money. So, so can you accommodate that situation?
Yes, we can. Definitely.
Sure?
We have.
We have a lot of broken promise before, so I hopefully don't, don't break our heart, okay, so.
We're providing that service in other cities. Typically, it's in the fee schedule if, if an applicant wants to pay for out of business hour inspection, weekend. Sometimes projects like grocery stores, they want to do a construction in the middle of the night, and they need inspections to move forward. We'll coordinate that with them, definitely.
It's too good to be true, okay? I hope this come true, okay? Hey, don't promise too much, okay? And Mayor Protim, you have some question?
Oh, I was just going to follow up with your inspection. I know I did see your report with the virtual appointment. Um, I know I did see your report with the, uh, virtual appointments, do they, do you also take, can they do online appointments for inspection as well, or is it something that they have to call in or make?
So we actually prefer online, it, it helps, um, kind of coordinate the emails that go to the building inspector, it gives a record. Um, the, the most common way is for people to call into a hotline, but we find that if we have an appointment calendar on, on the city's website, um, it's easier for us to organize the inspection, so yes, definitely.
And would the inspection document be loaded online as well for the person to see as well as the inspector?
The inspection document, like the request form?
Yes.
Yeah.
So everything, and I mean, in regards to continuity, um, because I had issues a few years ago as well, um, if an inspector comes and list all these things you need to correct, and then the next day, another inspector comes, they, they corrected everything, but now the new inspector finds something else, that's the issue that we were having, and that's the frustration that the residents have. How do you address that?
So that is something I take very personally, it's my responsibility, or it's us, our responsibility as a company to make sure that everybody's coordinated. I've actually had it where, you know, as an inspector, you go on a, I've been, I was an inspector for thirteen years, and I worked a lot of different inspectors, so occasionally you can't catch everything, and another inspector will go and say, you know what, here's a major safety item that may have either changed between inspections or overlooked, um, and they talk to each other. Is it something that, that we can tell them fix and, and move on, you don't need another inspection, we'll catch, we'll, we'll look at that before final inspection, there's all different ways you can handle something like that, really depends on what it is, but it's my responsibility and that, and the, kind of the buck ends with me on training everybody to be on the same page and communicate.
Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, I think it's the case, the complaint from the previous, okay, from the residents, okay, is a, uh, courtesy, okay, and, uh, customer service with courtesy, okay, so, uh, the attitude, okay, because sometimes inspector, they showing up, they like, I'm the boss, better to kiss my ring, okay, so, so I, I think the attitude is potentially because they feel like they have a power, okay, and the contractor or homeowner is so scared about going to, okay, disapprove this and that, and create more problem for them. So this courtesy, okay, and this customer service, okay, have you make sure your inspector understand that's very important to our city, okay, treat people with respect? Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm, I'm lucky enough to do, uh, most of the hiring of our building inspectors and our plan checkers, and I'll tell you this, I, I look for a personality first before anything else. I, I, I always say, I hire a personality, and then I can either train them, uh, the technical stuff, but I can't train a personality. So we look at that when we hire. Um, I'm very proud of, of the staff that I have, and, and we have these conversations on a weekly basis.
Okay, and, okay, Councilman Castellano, you have more question? Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I was gonna ask city staff some question, but I, I'm okay on that. One thing I, two things I want to talk about is especially given, well, the history from what you've heard, and given the fact that this would be two contracts, I would like to request two things, if my fellow council members agree with me. Uh, one would be to move forward on this with, as a one-year contract as opposed to two years, and also, as far as the fee schedule, I like a flat percentage better than, than the second option based on time and materials, but I'd like to request a flat forty percent. Uh, you listed kind of a sliding scale based on monthly building division revenues. Um, I want to be fair to our residents, businesses and builders, as well as to you guys for doing the work, that's why I'm requesting a flat forty percent across the board, so those are my two requests, if my fellow council members agree. Well.
Ask them first, okay, how you think? Are you guys okay with that, okay? And one thing is this, okay, I just, you understand, we try to try you, at the same time, we're thinking about the in-house, okay, we see which one more feasible, but if you guys doing such a good job, okay, and people love it, okay, and nobody complain, nobody send the email calling us, like yelling at us, okay, and then you guys doing good at city have a revenue, okay, everybody's happy, I don't think we will replace you, okay, replace you, we don't think we want to change your contract, it's, it's am broke, why fix it? So, so, so just, you guys have to perform. So the thing is this, okay, you guys kind of agree with, uh, Councilman Castellano with one year and forty percent?
Well, first, we greatly appreciate your confidence in us, and absolutely to the one year, you know, we would be honored to, um, serve you. You know, our fee structure is, is structured in a way that accounts for the actual physical staff being level at the city. So what we would request is if we could go back, see what is the best service approach to meet that request, and come up with, you know, a proposal of how we can achieve that, because right now, as it is, is it's two permit technicians, two inspectors.
Two and a half, yeah.
Two and a half inspectors, a building official, so there is a lot of actual physical staff that we are providing to the city for that, and that's how our fee structure is calculated compared to a lot of the cities that we serve, a lot of the cities nearby is our fee is very competitive. Um, we are typically the most cost effective, um, in our industry, um, as leaders in building and safety.
I have a, I have suggestion, okay, I have suggestion, I think if you can, okay, try this thing, okay, see you work in the number, okay, and in that way, if it's something, you can bring it back and see how we do it, but it, because we can approve tonight if you accept some of this thing, we, I, I, we, we can check of our council, but if it is too good to be true, it's something is a good to, okay, you cannot make even better offer, so we can accept this, okay, tonight, and give you this opportunity, okay, and you guys can at least, okay, see how this feasible for the cost, and we want to see how good is the service, so, so I think this is something, is opportunity for Trans-Tax to taking two very major department, engineer and the building and safety, and speaking true, we put a big trust in you.
We greatly appreciate that.
So how do you think?
I mean, for us to provide that level of service, we need to maintain a minimum level of staff, and that's really important to us.
True, true, we want a good service.
Customer service is the.
What, what's your current offer compare you counter back forty percent with your current offer, okay, uh, city manager, uh, this is city manager?
They were the only proposer to come up with a sliding scale, and frankly, the sliding scale makes the most sense, both for them as the contractor and us as the city. Um, I think as I mentioned originally, their proposal was the most cost competitive with the current structure.
Hmm.
So they have a, uh, cost split of fifty percent of revenue, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month in billing. Uh, forty percent is the ratio that I know the council is requesting. That ratio applies when total revenues, um, are between a hundred fifty thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then it drops to thirty-five percent, uh, if we.
Alan, Alan.
Generate more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So there's kind of.
It is very competitive.
Okay, so it's kind of level, so, so a minimal, we don't have much, much of project, they need to pay for their minimal, for their staffing, so when we get more and they go lower, so in that way, okay, they have enough and city have, uh, good, good revenue too, so, so in that way, and they go to thirty-five. So, so, so it's for fifty, forty, thirty-five, uh, based on, if we have good business, okay, they happy, the city happy.
Correct.
Okay, so, so I think I'm okay with, with that, okay, fee schedule, uh, with, uh, so we want to increase, okay, okay, encourage them to do, okay, more project, okay, to, to city, so city can have revenue, we need to pay the bill. I hope you understand, we not try to show change you, we have a police and more, and fire, and full service, and currently, okay, you know, the pandemic, we, we, we lost a lot of revenue, so, so we try to find a way, but customer service is number one, and the fee schedule, okay, so how do you?
Yeah, I, I could be flexible with that, as our mayor said, I mean, and you guys heard the beginning of the meeting, we, we do need a little bit more money, but I want to be fair to you guys, so, um, I'm willing to compromise, and as we emphasize, we cannot emphasize enough, we really need efficiency and customer service and, uh, making everyone happy and making things happen. We do anticipate at least several good projects coming through, so, um, you know, the fee schedule will probably get to the higher levels often, at least we hope, so I'm willing to compromise on that, keep this fee schedule, but, uh, make the, the initial term for one year.
Yeah, so, so see, we're not too tough, we're not try to skip you alive, okay, we, we try to get a, okay, fairness for both side, then you can pay for your staffing and provide good service, at the same time, the city can have a revenue to pay the bill, okay, I think this is win-win, but, uh, I think some of the builder talking about who's in charge, so we need somebody, a person in charge, okay, who is engineer in charge, who's responsible, the inspector, who is person in charge, that people can call this person and get it done, okay, get solved, resolve the problem, so they don't come to us, okay, and then when they come to us, you in trouble, okay, right? Okay, you can see the previous example already, so, okay, try to make the customer happy, hey, happy customer, happy life, okay, and that's why we try to do, okay, and try to encourage more people come to our city to spend money, and we need that, okay, so, and other than that, any other, Adam, want to do it, okay, and that, you have, yeah, go ahead, city manager.
If I may, uh, mayor and council, um, just to clarify, the current term, um, in section four point one of the contract is for two years with a two-year extension. Um, if I understand it correctly, the initial term would be for one year. Our contracts typically have extensions in them, is the council?
We can, we can give you the, uh, one-year extension, okay, so year to year.
I agree, yes, one, one-year extensions, we'll kick it off.
Yeah, one, one and one year.
Okay.
So one year's contract and a one-year extension, but speaking true, you're doing good, it's, you just like continue to do it, okay, and, uh, again, nobody will, okay, try to fix something, they're doing very good, right? It doesn't make any sense, okay?
Exactly.
So, so one year, one year extension and a fifteen-day termination, so meaning what, if you didn't do what you promised, so fifteen day, we're gonna terminate, okay, your contract, agree? I think this is on your contract already.
We, we promise to make you happy.
Yeah, I, I know, I know, I, you guys so confident, say, Tony, okay, you guys are going to like our service, so I think it's important, okay, that the resident and the people invest in our city, remember, you saw the Toyota is gonna build a big building, right? See, see, people have a confidence in our city, they want to bring, okay, their project, and we want to help them spend the money, and hopefully bring more revenue to our city, so this is what a win-win. Other than that, okay, uh, do I have any other, Adam? No, Adam? Okay, and, uh, you want to introduce your, I think I know almost, okay, okay, we know everybody already, somebody want to say something? No, okay? No, nothing to say, you just want to get over with so you can go home? Okay, understand, okay? So do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and I have a motion, okay, uh, to approve by Councilman Castellano, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Proton, let he, okay, Lopez Viado, but, okay, the, we approve with the contract is one year and a one year's, okay, extension, and a fifteen days already there, and the fee schedule, you, okay, we keep for you, see? We not let tough as a salesperson try to, okay, do tough bargain, but, okay, and work call, please?
Councilman Castellanos.
Hi.
Councilman Johnson.
Hi.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
I had a motion approved, five zero, congratulation, okay, and do a good job and make us proud, okay, thank you so much. Have a good night, thank you, thank you, appreciate, okay? Okay, and we go to next agenda, would be number eight from me, okay, I think this is a, a very complicated issue, and it's continued coming back, okay, to the, to us, and I think this is back in two thousand twelve, right? Okay, so maybe, okay, and, uh, uh, okay, our, okay, Paulina, okay, so-called, okay, uh, economy development department, okay, manager, okay, can give us a presentation about what this deal is about, okay, and what we get into it, and can we, how can we get out of this previous contract, and what we can do, okay, and, and this is something is really very, very tough for us, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I thought we were table this.
Uh, no, we want to present it, and then we decide we want table or not.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, okay, uh, go ahead.
So the item, the item before you this evening is, um, the, your approval, seeking your approval, uh, to negotiate, um, draft and negotiate an exclusive negotiation agreement with M&amp;A Gabay for the sale of agency, successor agency assets, um, we titled them the waters, uh, water tank assets, so they are highlighted in blue up here, if you can see. Blue up there. Uh, and so, as part of the long-range property management plan, um, these properties were listed to be, um, sold. Um, so a little bit of history on the, these parcels, um, as I said, they're part of the successor agency, they're former redevelopment agency assets, and so in December of two thousand fifteen, the successor agency received approval for the long-range property management plan that dictated what, what had to occur with the properties and approval for the finding of completion for the Department of Finance, so that allowed the agency to move forward with, um, implementing the long-range property management plan. Um, in two thousand seventeen, uh, M&amp;A Gabay reached out to this successor agency indicating interest to develop two adjacent parcels that they own, seven hundred and seven fifty pads, and as part of that, um, project, they wanted to purchase, required to, or wanted to purchase the, uh, water tank assets, um, that the, from the agency so that they can move forward with their proposed project. Um, in June of that year, two thousand seventeen, um, we entered into an E&amp;A with M&amp;A Gabay. Uh, six months later, um, we allowed, uh, the successor agency allowed to, um, the E&amp;A to expire. Um, staff was directed to pursue, um, continue discussions with Gabay without an E&amp;A for the sale of the water tank assets. Um, since then, the agency, um, agency staff has been working with M&amp;A Gabay to sell the water tank assets so that they can pursue development on their pads, um, and then due to changes in redevelopment dissolution law, um, we are required to, uh, enter into an updated E&amp;A for those, the sale of those assets. Um, so as I mentioned, Gabay, um, has expressed interest to purchase the water tanks because they want to develop their pads, so, um, in two thousand and six, the agent, former redevelopment agency, um, entered into a purchase and sale agreement, the two thousand six PSA, um, in which the agency sold M&amp;A Gabay what the pads we call now seven hundred and seven fifty pads, and they were required to do a commercial retailer office development on the pads. Um, part of that, uh, agreement, um, uh, does require, uh, use of the water tank assets for Gabay to build a water, uh, system on the, the pad, so even though the agency retained ownership, uh, Gabay was, uh, has, or is allowed to build the water tank system on the agency asset. Um, so like I said, we've also been working with M&amp;A Gabay for them to proceed with development of their pads on, um, pursuant to the two thousand six PSA. Um, oh, the sale of the water tank assets that is before you today, um, will allow Gabay to move forward with their development on the two adjacent pads. So this is a timeline of the two thousand six purchase agreement, um, this, it was executed in July two thousand six, um, that, there are several obligations that we'll get into, um, that they had to provide, so one of them was the middle of a precise plan, um, they also had to start, um, grading by a certain timeframe, um, and then in two thousand, there was a term of, uh, power of termination in the PSA that did expire in two thousand eleven, and that was the time that redevelopment agencies, we, uh, were getting, um, eliminated. Um, so the following year, February two thousand, uh, twelve, RDAs go away, and that's when the transfer of ownership of, uh, certain assets had to go through a process until two thousand fifteen, when we got approval to, um, move forward with the long-range property management plan. Um, so some of the obligations for pursuant to the two thousand six agreement, um, is completing a development project on their pads, um, and I think I will let Bruce talk a little bit about, uh, how this E&amp;A will help move this project forward.
Yes, the E&amp;A is a, uh, an exclusive negotiating agreement, uh, between, uh, proposed between, uh, M&amp;A Gabay and the city, uh, city's, um, successor agency, uh, in order to position M&amp;A Gabay to be able to get the water tank. get the water tanks in place that they need in order to develop the two properties, the 750 pads, that have been sitting essentially vacant and idle since 2007. Leaving the city with no income from those properties, no building permit fees that will be somewhere in the range of a million dollars. And this is to move that project forward. It is very essential. It demonstrates that M&amp;A Gabay, despite first suffering from the Great Recession back in '08, '09, 2010, right after they purchased the properties and began to grade them, and then dealing with the dissolution of the redevelopment agency and the uncertainties that came along with that, it shows that they're back on track to get the projects done, to do at a proposed, at this point, research and development project that is frankly very attractive and will be an asset for the city. And the E&amp;A is the primary first step to get that accomplished at this point. From there, it would be a matter of negotiating the actual purchase price based on a fair market value appraisal and getting the water tanks in place with the work essentially being done by suburban water systems. So it's, it's a positive step forward that we've been working with them now for well over a year, almost two years, to get things rolling. And it's, it's picking up steam and they're excited. And this is a potential very good proposal, proposal for the city.
So then, there's two options moving forward. We can execute the E&amp;A, as Bruce mentioned, will help us in moving the 750 pad project forward as well. Or we can continue to have discussions and that would limit our ability to move that project forward. So, do you guys have any questions?
Okay, and Council, any question? Okay, Councilman Castellano, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so the second option you listed, just to highlight to the public of continuing discussions and not updating the E&amp;A, what is the risk or downside of that? Could you explain, please?
There's a legal potential risk there based on California's new amendment this last year to the surplus land act that would cause the city to have to potentially breach its contract with M&amp;A Gabay by having to offer the property to the extent that it qualifies under the, under the act, and I, I believe that it may, to public agencies for other uses such as potential affordable housing, parkland, that sort of thing, that would create a tremendous conflict potentially with M&amp;A Gabay, with them being able to finish the project, with them being able to do their part of the purchase and sales agreement with the city not being able then to do its part. So there is a time-sensitive element to this, that it be accomplished hopefully by the end of the year. Thank you.
And, okay, and other way I want to follow up, okay, a question, okay? 2006, why not 2020? So basically, it's 14 years ago project. And I, my understand, my, my understanding is this basically, they're the two property that is valuable is always sold back in 2006 to the Charles Company. Am I right?
No, it was sold to M&amp;A Gabay.
No, I think it's Charles Company, right?
It's M&amp;A Gabay is.
It's M&amp;A Gabay.
So these are the two properties that were sold to M&amp;A Gabay.
What difference between the Charles Company and M&amp;A Gabay? Okay, what, did the mother company, what, or what, what the relationship between these two company?
I, I don't know what their relationship is. The company that is the general partner of M&amp;A Gabay is Sancor or, I think it's Sancor.
So, 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 so M&amp;A Gabay, okay, owned this property back in 2006?
Yes.
Okay, and the previous city council, they sold to them?
True.
And then my understanding is they tried to build a office building?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Correct.
Right, right? They want to build office building?
Yes.
Yes.
Remember, I have the plan, okay? They want to build, and they need to build, what, within two years?
Yes.
Okay, and they need to build in the middle of this land, they need to put the water tank?
Yes.
And this water tank need to, okay, supply not only for their building, the previous council in 2006 approved, at the same time, we'll supply on the top for the approved, okay, clubhouse, for the golf course.
Correct.
So that's what my understanding about entire situation. And M&amp;A Gabay need to build infrastructure for the road.
Correct.
So all this is on the contract and then to finish within two years. Am I right?
That's true.
And so what happened, why now, 2020, we still coming back that our, this, I'm very young when I was, in 2006?
Yeah, I think, I think we all can remember the, the bubble bursting on not just the housing market, but also the commercial building market as well.
The country, the country is no excuses.
I understand, but I mean, we're now looking at properties that are sat there undeveloped for years. Here's a chance to get it developed.
I, I understand, but I just want to get a timeline, okay, what get us into it and how we can get out of this. I understand you want us to sell to them, but what kind of credibility they have in 2006 they should build, but now we're going to, they say they're going to finish up, is that have a credibility for them to fulfill what they promised? Because previously, it's not happening. So if it didn't happen, how can this time it will happen? This is the worry I have.
I understand. There's a, a certain.
Risk.
Well, there's, there's just a certain excitation on their part that we pick up when we're meeting with them and discussing this with them. There are some complexities to work through that we've been working through. And they've been working right along, trying to get this accomplished. And they're, they're, this is step one, and that's what we need.
So basically, we're going to approve this to discuss with the contract we already have with them before not expire?
No. Now, this, this is for purchase of a separate piece of property that if the parties come to an agreement, it moves forward. If it, if they don't come to an agreement within 180 days, the E&amp;A will expire and they will be sitting there with their property without water tanks.
So basically, this land is designed, build a water tank?
It's, it was called the water tank properties.
It was intended to allow Gabay to develop the water tank system on that property. So whether it was.
My understanding.
Water tank.
For this, so many, this couple of years, I see this council seat, it's been bring back to us again, again regarding this water tank, this water tank, and it's like never go away. Okay, so, okay, are they going to build a water tank? Okay, we have to sell to them so they can build a water tank? Is that what this is about?
Yes, so there, the development, the research and development project that they want to do on their pads requires water. There's no water system to provide for any project up there. So they do have to find water for any development up there. And so this piece of parcel or property would allow them to have access to water up there.
So in 2006 contract, when this approved by the previous 2006 city council, that already, okay, this had to sell to them for the water tank? So in that way, they can build their project, the land in 2006 council sold to them?
So that the project could have water, they made arrangements for there to be water tanks available beside them that would not only service their properties, but they have to build them and pay for them to service other properties of the agency up there as well as the intended clubhouse and golf course. So, I mean, it's a, it's frankly a win-win for the city at this point. The city's not paying for any of that. And it's, it's on the developer to do it, and the developer wants to do it.
Are they going to do the infrastructures, the previous contract request?
Yes.
They do, they willing to do it?
Yes.
And are we going to have a teeth with this contract? Because last time looked like we have no teeth in 2006.
That's part of this whole negotiation is getting an amendment to the original purchase and sale agreement to give the city back its teeth. And they have agreed to those terms provisionally depending upon the E&amp;A and going forward with the purchase of this pad.
So currently, we stuck? We have no teeth, no jurisdiction to do anything?
Currently, yes.
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, currently, yes. We can't make them do anything on those lots. They're their lots. They own them. We can't make them do anything. However, what has been discussed and appears to be agreed in principle is an amendment to the original sales agreement to renew the teeth for the city, to get them to do the project that they want to do and have indicated they will agree to performance schedules for, so.
I understand the previous in 2006, the project is the office building. And are they going to continue to do the same thing, the, what the previous council approved?
No.
No?
No, that, that penciled out, from what I could see, at about $185 million and did not look like it was going to be worth their investment.
So.
This project pencils out at about a quarter of that.
So due to the side, due to the economy, so what they planning to do?
I beg your pardon?
What are they planning to do? What they're going to do, what kind of development now?
A research and development on both of the pads that are attractive, that will bring in businesses and employees and will be an asset for the city.
So basically, we allow, we let them have this small parcel, the water tank, okay, and they cannot build the water tank, then the property will stay there forever?
I'm sorry, what?
Say, if we do not sell this water tank land to them to put the water tank, then they cannot build both of the pad, basically.
That's right.
They have no water.
That's right.
And then possible the city not in compliance to allow them to do it from, I think, 2006 contract, even they already expire?
Yeah, that, we can't make them do anything unless we work with them to cooperate, to get the agreements back in place so that the city has teeth and can get them to move forward.
I, I have a question, okay? I understand, okay, we talk about, okay, the previous contract expired for two years or something, four years after 2006, or, or what, 2010?
Contract still in force. The, the original contract had something called a power of termination. In the event that there was a breach of the contract by the developer, the city had the right to, within a five-year period.
From when? Five, five years from what?
Five years from the breach, had the right.
When it's breached?
Breach of the contract.
No, when, do you know the time?
Failing to do one of the things.
Understand the time, 2011, 2012?
It was around 2011.
2011?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was during the time redevelopment was getting eliminated statewide.
Yeah, so at that point, the redevelopment agency didn't want to apparently buy back the property. And so that right went away. But what we've talked with M&amp;A Gabay and their representatives about is amending the contract, the original purchase and sales agreement, to reinsert that provision or make it, revalidate that provision to give the city the ability, if it chooses in the event of a breach by the developer, not meeting its requirements under the performance schedule, to buy the property back for the original purchase price plus any hard, actual construction cost that they have expended. That's the provision.
So we, we, this time we have teeths?
We would then have teeths.
And instead including the two property they own, okay, or only?
Both, for both.
For both property, including the water tank?
Well, we, we, we can include that in the.
So basically, two parcel they want to develop. Now, we have a teeths to, if they don't do it, we can request them to sell back to us?
Exactly.
Okay?
Yes.
So, so what the year, how many year we have?
Well, we can talk, we have five years from a breach, but you can also talk to them about waiving the statute of limitations, but I don't think you want to do that because you do want to move forward with.
We want to, we want to move forward, okay?
Yeah, and so if there is a breach, you simply exercise your power of termination and indicate that you're going to purchase it if they don't care.
So, so basically, is what this is, based on your suggestion or your method, is how the city finally take back the control? Currently, we have no control.
Exactly, exactly.
Because right now, the contract expired but still kind of in force and it kind of limbo. And then we cannot force them to do anything.
That's true.
They can say, we don't allow them to put the water tank, then is the fault of the city.
This is to get the city back in charge.
Okay, so any council have other question? No? So what the council want to do? Want to move the motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion moved by Councilman Castellano and a second by Councilman Johnson. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Costelanos.
I.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
I, motion approved 5-0. Thank you so much. Hopefully, okay, make sure the E&amp;A, we have the teeths, okay? And this time, we want to enforce, make sure the city in control.
The E&amp;A allows for us to get the purchase and sales agreement and it will have teeths.
Thank you so much, okay? Thank you, Bruce, really appreciate. Okay, and we move to next agenda would be number 10, okay? And who's going to, okay, present this?
Yes, Mayor, we actually have an individual here from TransTech, Ocon, to present. He's with the Public Works Engineering Group and will be presenting the payment management plan.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Do you have a PowerPoint, no?
Yes, Paulina is getting it ready.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Mayor Protem, members of the council. Tonight, I will be presenting Payment Management Program 2020 update. The update is prepared by Nichols Consulting Engineers and we have a representative from NC, Ms. Katrina, she's with us today as well. Next slide, please. Payment Management Program is a planning level tool which helps to prioritize roadway rehabilitation and maintenance projects based on available funding. In order to be eligible for federal funds and certain state funds, perhaps, every city is required to establish and maintain their own payment management program every three years. Payment Management Program provides a process for rating the payment conditions, establishing a consistent payment maintenance and repair schedule, and evaluating the effectiveness of maintenance treatment strategies. Next slide, please. Payment Management Program is designed to answer typical questions such as, what is the city's existing condition of the city's streets? How will the condition of the city's maintained streets respond over time under existing funding levels? What maintenance and rehab strategies exist to improve current street conditions and questions like that? Next please, next slide, please. Payment Management Program is a planning tool and its recommendations are not intended to replace engineering design and engineering judgment. Before making final recommendations, necessary field engineering reviews are conducted and project plans and specifications are prepared accordingly. Next slide, please. As part of Payment Management Program. As part of Payment Management Program, each street segment is evaluated by visual observations, and a condition rating number called Payment Condition Index is assigned. This is a number between 0 to 100, 0 meaning poor, failed street, and 100 meaning excellent condition street. Next slide, please. City's current Payment Condition Index of 68 is showing it's in a good street category. Approximately 93% of all streets in the city network are either good or fair condition streets. Next slide, please. City's current, next slide, please. City's current Payment Condition Index of 68 is two points higher than the statewide average payment condition, average. Next slide, please. Next few slides show sample pictures showing different payment conditions. This one is a 100 PCI, showing a recently constructed street in excellent condition. Next slide, please. This street is in PCI Payment Condition Index of 60, which is in fair condition. You can see some longitudinal cracks forming. Next slide, please. This street segment is in condition of 41, which is in close to poor condition. You can see extensive block crackings and some load-related cracks are forming. Next slide, please. And this is finally an example of a failed street with a PCI of 5 out of 100. It's a failed street, and you can see alligator, we call it alligator crackings, like structural-related crackings. Next slide, please. In establishing a consistent maintenance and rehabilitation strategy, we take three steps in consideration of the program. The first one, very important, preventive maintenance. This treatment is applicable to good and fair condition streets, and typically, we apply slurry seal, crack seal as part of this preventive maintenance. It is applicable to good condition streets, and every five to seven-year cycle is recommended. Secondly, payment rehabilitation and restoration techniques, which usually includes asphalt grind and overlay. This treatment involves removing the top layer of the asphalt and replacing with a new asphalt layer, basically. And the third, finally, is the full reconstruction, which is a very costly treatment method which is applicable to failed streets. Next slide, please. Preventive maintenance is a cost-effective and efficient approach in developing a work program when establishing a capital improvements program. It must be considered in combination of preventive maintenance such as slurry seal, crack seal, and also combination of asphalt rehabilitation such as grind and overlay to be effective. Street segments currently within the range of fair to good receive required preventive maintenance needed to maintain their life expectancy. Next slide, please. This is a typical chart showing payment condition versus the percent of payment life. It basically shows the exponential growth increase in the cost from the low-cost preventive maintenance on good and fair condition streets to higher cost of reconstruction on failed streets, basically. There's an exponential growth in the life cycle of the payment. Next slide, please. City's Payment Management Program is developed by dividing the city into 12 maintenance zones. The intention on this is to increase efficiency and effectiveness by minimizing the constructability and the mobilization cost by focusing on targeted areas. Next slide, please. This is the representation of the maintenance zones, the 12 zones at the city. Next slide, please. Based on the available funding, a strategy was developed based on a 10-year maintenance cycle. This strategy includes three different funding scenarios, and this strategy includes two traditional payment rehab treatments, including both slurry seal, crack seal, as well as asphalt grind and overlay. Although the funding is 10 years, the focus is to establish every three years an update of this program. So the intent is to revise this program within three years and based on the available current funding levels, come back to council and make an updated presentation. So currently, with the available funding scenarios, the staff is recommending Funding Scenario 3, which is on the first year, a front-loaded scenario, which includes $9 million in the first year and then $2.5 million every year thereafter for a 10-year program. And the goal is to use the reserve funds, including gas tax, Measure M, Measure R, in the first year as part of the front-load, and then $2.5 million every year, which is focusing on the gas tax. This strategy increases the PCI in the first year from 68 to 72, and then gradually decreases to 60 at the end of the year 10. This concludes the presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, City Council, any question? Yeah, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
So I was looking at the pictures. I know they didn't show the names on the screen for the residents to see. The PCI 5, which is, that's the worst. So that's Francis Guido Avenue, from Broadmoor Avenue to California Avenue. And the second worst is Allwood Street, from Pricedale Avenue to Frandale Avenue. So I was looking at your pavement resurfacing program, and they are in the zone of 5 and 6. So when you, when you are figuring out which zones to do first, is it based on need or just randomly? How did you decide which ones first?
So basically, every year, the focus in on one particular zone. So what happens is, depending on the available funding level, every year, at a given year, a particular zone would be focused. For example, this year, we focused on maintenance zones 10 and 11 as part of the improvements.
I see 10 and 11 will be done in 2026, 2027, and then...
That's the next cycle, upcoming cycle.
Oh, so you just completed?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So basically, it's a continuous cycle. Every year, at least one or two, depending on the funding level. That's the approach we're taking. The intent is not necessarily focusing the entire city because the way construction works is, if we focus on a targeted area, we can minimize the mobilization cost and increase the construction efficiencies by basically focusing on a certain area so that the contractor can minimize their mobilization, their traffic control by focusing on particular part of the city, basically.
Okay, so when you handle the low levels of like PCI 5 and 41, they're going to be paved almost to perfection, correct? Because I know there's, you know, different streets have different issues. So I just want to make sure that's going to be taken care of, especially the southwest side of our city.
Absolutely. So in establishing an efficient payment management program, the goal is always focusing on good and fair streets first. The reason why is it costs much less to apply preventive maintenance treatments such as slurry seal, crack seal, and rehabilitation techniques such as asphalt grind and overlay, which are applicable to good and fair streets. In failed or poor streets, what we call them, which is PCI less than 40, those streets are already failed. So the cost is significant, the reconstruction cost is significant. But the opportunity lies in the good and fair condition streets so that if we can maintain those streets in that zone as much, to the extent possible, that condition streets basically can remain in that zone as much as possible so that we can keep the maintenance cost at a certain level, but not increasing it to the next level, which is the reconstruction.
So are you saying the failed and poor streets will be continued to be neglected?
No, they would be still part of the program, absolutely. But the main intent, the focus is on good, fair, and then poor streets. And then the next priority would be on the lower.
Well, I mean, I don't, that doesn't seem right because if you only focus on the good and fair street, then there's no more funding for the poor and failed street. Hence, that street will continue to be neglected.
It would still be included in the program, but...
Will they be fixed?
Depending on the funding sources, it would certainly be addressed and evaluated. But based on the available funding sources, it would be basically treated on the system with certain scoring criteria. Because the way the system works is basically, the city uses Street Saver Program, and it's a mathematical empirical approach, basically. So based on the visual observations, the system would take in all the data from the visual observation, and it would calculate mathematically and optimizes basically the results. And every year, the system tells us, basically, if you have this funding level available, this is the treatment strategies, and these are the streets that you want to be focusing on to maximize the benefit-cost ratio with available resources to the extent feasible.
I mean, I'd like to see that system changed because obviously, those streets are where I live, in that neighborhood, and those streets do fall under failed and poor. And based on what you're saying, they're going to continue to be neglected.
We would definitely include that as part of the analysis, and we would include that as part of the overall review.
That's only analysis, but based on what you're saying is the only, they focus on the good and fair and spend it on that.
It would still be part of the system. So those streets would definitely be part of the system.
Can the system be changed to focusing on failed and poor streets?
Absolutely. The priorities can be changed on the system.
I think I can understand where you're coming from, okay? Because the cost is very important, the cost factor. So if some of the street can do the prevention, it will reduce the cost because when you go to totally revamp, basically costs a lot of money. So I think this is what it's coming from, right? Am I right?
Yeah, basically, reconstruction is approximately four times more costly than grind and overlay. And grind and overlay is approximately two times more costly than the preventive maintenance, which is slurry seal, crack seal. So as you mentioned, the cost is significantly higher.
I understand from your presentation...
Yes.
What I received is prevention, it would be better than with construction.
Absolutely.
If we can make sure all those street can kind of fix with the prevention, so it will last longer.
Yes.
So we don't have to reconstruct street to street. That costs way too much money and plus not sufficiently efficient.
Yes.
You want to, Ahmad, you want to say something? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to provide a different perspective. Those streets that are really bad PCI, they're not going to be neglected. That's one thing. But let me give an example. If a mile of a street, it's at the reconstruction category, in other words, if it costs $2 million to fix a mile of a street which has already failed, that will be $2 million forever, okay? But those streets that are on the curve, they're beginning to fail, or they're fair, but they're failing, they cost, say, $300,000, $400,000 for a mile, you know, to do grind and overlay. If you don't catch the curve of the maintenance right now, in a year or two years, they're going to jump to $1 million. So that's what we are trying to do with the PMP, Pavement Management Plan Tool, to optimize our scarce dollars to those streets that are beginning to fail so that in a very short period of time, we're not talking about three times as much more expensive. But that doesn't mean that the localized areas, you know, particularly in the residential areas, Mayor Protem, that maybe a short section of a street that has been alligator, you know, due to rain or whatever, that can't be addressed. You know, definitely, depending on the funding available, we will prioritize those locations and we'll do it. But for the major streets, you know, if there is a long section of failure, oftentimes, there is federal funds involved, you know, that the city doesn't have to go to gas tax or SB 1 or some of the more scarce funding. And we can do those under separate programs.
Based on my understanding, I think from the presentation, what you just stated, it is a cost factor.
Exactly.
Cost factor, because we only have a certain major M or major A money. So if we want to use this money, we want to use it wisely. Otherwise, money would be wasted because we only have this certain budget. So in that way, what is the cost factor? That's what you guys have to look into it. Which one can, we can make sure the street is working by the same time?
Exactly, exactly.
Make it more cost factor.
Right, one of the principles of the PMP, especially with the computerized and software-aided, is worst first is not the criteria. You know, you need to expand your dollars to the streets that are beginning to fail so that you're not talking about millions and millions and millions.
Yeah, because we are 17 square mile, we have a lot of street, and we have to prioritize for each one, what is the cost factor and what is the efficiency with the money we have? Otherwise, we run out of money right away. Yeah, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
So the cycle is for each zone, is it every 12 years?
Every 12 years.
Will you close the microphone?
I'm sorry, maintenance zone, yeah, there are 12 zones, so it's every 12 cycles for each zone, basically.
See, and I understand what, you know, you're trying to make sure things don't go to failure. But what I will see here is that when the 12th year come again with that same location, it's going to be the same thing over and over, and they're only going to continue to fix the good and fair, which, again, it's going to be neglecting the failed and poor. That's my concern.
So if I may, Mayor Protem, those streets are important, but they're not addressed through this program. As Ahmad had said, the city would need to seek special funding, one-time funding because the current annual funding that we get, the primary sources are gas tax, which we get annually, as well as Measure M and Measure R monies from the county. So we would need to seek other one-time funding such as block grant funding or special federal funding to do those types of streets. We want to do those streets, as has been stated, but for every one mile that we do of streets that are failed, it does take away resources from doing five or six miles of another street. So we're not going to not do those. We just need to seek other funding sources.
I do understand that. I just want to make sure that those failed streets will be taken care of. My next question is the PCI 5 versus PCI 41. Why is that one a lower rating when visually it looks nicer and better than PCI 41?
On the PCI 5, the picture may not represent the actual condition, but you can see, we call it alligator cracking. Those are really like hairline, small crackings, and that represents that there is an issue on the subgrade, which certainly addresses some structural issues with the overall condition of the payment, which would require some engineered design and reconstruction. So although the picture may not represent the situation clearly, those small cracks, we call it alligator cracking, that's a failed condition on the asphalt. That's why it is in a poorer condition than the other one, which is in 41, PCI 41.
And would you know how many failed or poor streets the city of West Covina currently has?
Yes, so on slide, one of the slides, it shows 93% on, where it shows the network PCI of 68. Basically, there is a pie chart, and if you look at the pie chart, 6.7%. Yes, that's the pie chart. So the yellow category, which is poor, between 20 to 40 PCI, that's 6.7% of the overall street network, where the very poor and failed is a very minor, it's almost like 0.4%. So on the, in other words, basically, if you look at good and fair streets, which are applicable to preventive maintenance strategies, the one we mentioned during presentation, they consist of 93% of the overall street network.
Okay, thank you.
So any other question? Okay, is this a received and filed or disapproval?
We are actually seeking approval, Mayor, for recommendation number three.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I see your recommendation to approve updated 2020 management program. It's for a 10-year pavement program. So the cycles, is it for 10 years or is it for a 10-year cycle?
Well, it's... Well, it's, um, a, they're required to be 10 years long, but they do get updated every three years, which I know is a little confusing. Um, so what it allows us to do is if our budget changes in the next three years, we could certainly look at allocating more money to, uh, annual maintenance programs. So it is a 10-year program, but it does get reevaluated every three years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, if none, any other question of the way, do, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion.
Okay, uh, motion approved, moved by Councilman Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilman Castellano, a roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Okay, aye, and a motion approved 5-0, thank you so much. Okay, make our street beautiful and last longer, okay? And cause effective, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you so much, have a good night. Okay, uh, we move item number 11, okay, review park, okay, facility and field use policy, okay, who is going to present this?
Good evening, Mayor.
Oh, hi, Mike, yeah.
How you doing tonight? How is everybody?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, this report is to discuss, uh, our athletic facilities and field use policies. Um, due to the stay-home order during the COVID-19 pandemic, field and athletic facilities have seen an increase in unauthorized use. Um, we had resident up complaining today about it at Cameron Park. So Los Angeles County has eased restrictions for outdoor use by youth teams that follow social distance guidelines. The la, the guidelines allow for inner squad play and practice, but not games with opposing teams. That is where the major conflict has been coming up with us renting our fields again and letting the leagues use the fields again. Inner squad is just games between your own teams and teams are obviously pushing the limits with that and trying to bring in other teams and do friendlies and tournaments and things of that nature. So that's the thing we've been trying to, um, get a hold of and make sure users are using, are, are following the guidelines and not doing that. So, um, we'll continue to monitor county public health guidelines and make sure that organizations and travel teams are, are following those. So if we could go to the first slide? We prioritize, we prioritize field use, we prioritize field use with our sports, um, to our local youth leagues first that are members of our West Covina Youth Sports Council. This council is comprised of teams that meet the following guidelines. They must have been voted in by majority of organized, organizations in attendance at a regular council meeting, provided proof of recognition by the Internal Revenue Service as a 501(c)(3) organization. 51% of membership of organizations must be residents of West Covina. Um, they must provide liability insurance with the city additionally insured, have facility use agreements with not only the city, but the school district, and provide financial records upon written request from the city and adhere to all their, all their bylaws. Um, in return, what we do as a city is we allow the leagues to use their, their facilities for league playing things at no cost. In return, they maintain the infield, snack bars, um, general area of the park and work on keeping their facilities nice. Next slide, please. This is a list of the organizations that currently are in sports council and the fields that they use. I don't know if you want to go one by one, but, um, that's there. Next slide, please. The other facility we have a use agreement for is Maverick Park. Uh, we are currently in agreement with Maverick Baseball Academy and, uh, that, that agreement is from September 2016 to September 2021. The terms of the agreement include, uh, the city and, and Maverick Baseball Academy will determine facility use with the West Covina residents given priority and team selection and public use. Any alterations of any kind to the facility or grounds must be approved in advance and writing by the city at the sole expense of MBA. MBA shall maintain the facilities at, at above current condition as of the effective date of the agreement at no cost to the city. Um, Maverick will also submits a quarterly donation to our community service foundation that's $2,500 a quarter, so we get about $10,000 annually from them. And that actually is a big help for our youth leagues. They, um, that is what we use to maintain, uh, any issues that should arise. If there's an issue with a snack bar, window broken, things that the leagues just can't maintain, more of an infrastructure thing, so the $10,000 donations from this organization has definitely helped. Um, I don't know if you've been by Maverick, but they also do an excellent job of maintaining the field, done upgrades of LED lights, bullpens, uh, you name it, they've done it. So they've actually been a very good partner and helped with that. Um, we are working on getting more access to the local youth leagues at the field as well. So, next slide, please. In addition to the sports council members, we also rent out the fields when they become available. Um, the fields that we showed on the first or on the second slide, you know, those usually are not rented. Most leagues want the field seven days a week and they may, you know, they practice games, everything all at their one location, so those are not rentable with the exception of Palm View Park, which is a smaller little league that we do rent out on a, a couple nights a week and they partner together on maintenance. But, um, our other facilities such as Shadow Oak and Friendship Park are rented on a regular basis. We charge a flat rate for field use and we charge for lights as well. Um, we also rent out our gymnasium, so Cameron Park is rented out very regularly. It's our biggest, our biggest, um, earner, as we say, and, uh, that can be used for volleyball, basketball, drop-in play, uh, wide variety. I mean, we even do footsaw or indoor soccer in certain occasions as well, but majority of use is basketball and volleyball. All, all reservations can be made through the Community Services Department. Obviously, when we're not in COVID, Cameron is open seven days a week and people can walk in and get information and do that. Currently, with the state of everything, we are taking phone calls, returning calls and then doing anything, everything online, payments, um, applications, insurance, everything that, you know, they contact the city, we contact that, contact, uh, excuse me, contact them back and give them the information and, and handle business that way. Next slide, please. This is a breakdown of the revenue we've made the last few years. As you can see, pre-COVID, the gym did very well, over $100,000 a year annually. Ball fields, we usually generate around 28,000 to 25,000, depending on availability at the fields. This brings me to another issue. We recently had an issue at a ball field where, uh, a renter came in, met all guidelines, turned in all their paperwork, paid all their fees and did that, but they pushed the inner squad, you know, the inner squad, uh, term and they pushed that to where they were doing friendlies, schedules were going out, other teams were coming in and we actually had to remove them from the field because of that. As long as, you know, as long as teams are following social guidelines and doing what they need to do, you know, we want to have them out there, we'd rather have controlled groups out there that are following socially guideline, following social guidelines than, um, rogue groups bringing in more people to the city, doing damage and causing things of that nature. So we are trying to stay on top of that. In addition, um, Les LaFleur talked about games going on at Cameron Park. This weekend, we will have staff out at the park to try to address who's out there because we don't know. They aren't, you know, they aren't booking with us, they aren't talking to us, so we are going out and going to do what we can and work with PD in advance and, and see if we can catch who that is and try to make sure that they either handle the process properly or, you know, make sure that they're not using our facilities. So pretty short report, um, that's pretty much it and I'll open up to some questions.
Okay, and Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Actually, I'm going to have a lot of questions.
Hey, this is your agenda.
I know, it's my agenda, thank you. Actually.
We have, we have all night for you.
Okay. The, having the kids, the people come out the parks, even though you have the restriction is not going to stop them. It happens at my parks, I see it even when I drive to other cities, they're there, they utilize it, they play, they don't adhere to the county rules, which is difficult to enforce at that level. So, um, but I wanted to know, how are the sports council maintaining the field snack bar and building and how often and what is their responsibility versus the city?
At the fields, the city's responsibility, what we maintain is mainly the outfield and, um, you know, big ticket items, roofs, uh, roofs, things like that. The leagues themselves actually maintain the interior of the snack bar, they make sure they're compliant with the county, they handle all their equipment on the inside, uh, they handle the infields, infield irrigation, um, dirt, dirt per se, like, uh, we actually do not provide them much material, uh, as stated before. If there's a major issue that they cannot handle, we do step in and help where we can, uh, but very little. So the leagues are handling them pretty much year-round, whether they're in season or not, and take, you know, they take care of those facilities. For example, soccer, they, you know, they have the new soccer complex and they've been fantastic. They've been spending about $30,000 a year annually to maintain the turf there, that's money out of their pocket, they, they put into that and, and use their, um, you know, where the issues run in is some of the bigger, uh, CIP items, you know, the, the capital improvements where the city, you know, some of these facilities are from the, you know, 50s and 60s, so they're getting up there in years. And even though the leagues have done the best they can to maintain them, some of the infrastructure is in need of repair and, uh, that, that is something that over the years, due to, you know, the budgetary situations that we deal with, ha, have not been addressed as much as we would like. So, um, does that answer the question?
Uh, yes, I'm going to have more questions. On the chart, I see that there's two separate West Covina National Little League, is that?
Mm-hmm.
So we have two, they just have the same names? Or is it two separate or is that one?
Let me make sure, let me see if it's a typo. I mean, West Covina National, they're at Del Nordy Park, West Covina National Little League.
So that we have eight sports?
Oh, you know what, I'm sorry, that's a mistake, that's a typo, it's the same league, it happened, it's at Del Nordy Park.
Okay, so we only have a total of seven?
Yes, correct, seven leagues. West Covina Youth Basketball is no longer a member of sports council, so we, we don't, we currently do not have a basketball league in the city. We do have, I'm sorry, we do have renters, we have, of leagues that rent the gymnasium, but they are not affiliated with sports council.
And why doesn't City of West Covina run our own leagues?
We did used to run our own leagues in the past, we had a, a recreational programs called Little Shots and, you know, uh, numbers kind of trended down. You know, we were, we were losing numbers and then due to, um, budgetary constraints, programs were cut because of that.
Um, besides Maverick Baseball Academy, does the other leagues also donate to the Community Service Foundation for improvements of facilities?
Currently, no other leagues donate to, to the foundation, no.
And has those leagues, leagues fee increased?
We haven't, as stated, as stated before, we have not, uh, we do not, any member of sports council, we do not charge. Um, in the past, there's been recommendations of maybe a pass-through free, pass-through fee or registration, lights, things of that nature, but that has not been a direction that, that we've decided to go.
Okay, because I know at work, we actually charge like a $5, um, portion that goes for refurbishment fees, so then in case we need to refurbish our fields or anything that, it goes back to that. But you've been saying that we've been using the community funds to fix all the other parks, but it's really, um, Maverick Baseball Academy who's kind of putting in that, into that, right?
Maverick is the primary donor, yes.
Um, when was, uh, rates and fees last updated?
For community services, our fees are, are updated annually. When it comes to new fee, um, you know, we, we submit them and sometimes councils for it and sometimes it's not. The fees you're discussing now, like the registration fee and things for the side, that's something that count, prior councils have not, um, approached or, you know, for whatever reason, not, not decided to implement. Um, but as far as community service fees, we base our fees on market value, so we have a flexibility and we try to gauge how much usage we have, what we're doing and, and do what we can to recover whatever cost we can.
These youth leagues don't pay a single dime?
Members of sports council do not pay a single dime.
Okay, um, you know, as, as a mother, I, because I, I remember I did a fit league, but they're not the youth council league, they're a private entity.
That is correct.
And I know these, um, youth leagues, they're pretty pricey. I mean, they're like 140, 200, and you still have to work, fix it and fundraise and everything. So these don't, you know, and I, I do remember when my kids were younger, we went to just Baldwin Park, it was like 50 bucks and even in my city, $50 for the full package. Um, but it concerns me that they charge all these fees. Uh, actually, we leave out the family who just wants recreation, who doesn't want, they just want something out and there's, is there anything for, you know, families who just want recreation?
Each, well, the city no longer offers anything, but each league handles that differently. Like, for example, little league, um, I'm not 100% positive, but most little leagues, if somebody has financial hardship, can't make it, they will accept them and get them into the league one way or another. I don't know how they sponsor that or what they do on that, but, uh, as far as, other than the, the leagues that come in and rent, you know, um, that has not been, you know, there is no longer a recreational league. Um, the other thing that I will say here is that we have tended to, you know, there seems, there seems to be a trend of travel, travel sports. Um, a lot of travel teams, a lot of people decide, hey, I don't like this league, I'm going to get 11 kids and I'm going to start up a team, so I think there's numerous factors of why leagues are changing, but the trend we were seeing and talking to neighboring cities even today before talking in this report, you know, numbers for recreational leagues just seem to be trending in a downward, uh, in a downward cycle.
Electronics, playmen electronic. Um, what is the breakdown of the usage with, uh, West Covina Sports Council leagues versus the availability of, uh, use for public and open permits?
Well, as stated before, um, most of the organizations, for example, soccer, there's 1,500 kids in soccer and they basically have two soccer fields, so they use the field seven days a week, pretty much 12 months a year. Um, baseball leagues, things of that nature, uh, they, each facility is basically used seven days a week. It's six days of, six days of field play and then one day of rest for the field to keep the field in good condition or try to keep the field in good condition. That being said, in sports council, before COVID, before the pandemic started, we were working on a lottery system where we would allocate field space for six months, give out the field space and then rent everything that's left after that. The concern has been that some leagues, you know, they want the same amount of time even though they're down 150 kids. So that's things that sports council has been working on controlling, trying to put rules and regulation, rules and regulations to, um, make sure that that can be avoided.
I mean, I'd like to see the fairness because I do see that there are some leagues or, like you said, they only have 50 kids, but they want to use the field three days a week versus, you know, a team that has 200 kids, you know, being equal, so I, I'd like for you to look into that.
And, um, Mayor Protem, just so you are aware, like I said, Friendship and Shadow Oak Park, Shadow Oak Park, we do give to soccer and football, like I said, we give you, we give, um, youth sports council priority, so those are two leagues that have continued to grow in numbers. Like I said, soccer, there's never, you know, I'm sure you're, you know.
Yeah, soccer is.
Never enough space.
All cities, it's never enough space, um, that, and with their numbers and the limited space, that completely understandable. I know baseball in general, I've seen a decline, um, and especially with the older age division, because I run sports, that's the hardest, um, to bring in, uh, for whatever reason, you know, the interest level is not as high anymore, so we do see a decline in that. Is there a decline on, um, the numbers? Do you know the current numbers that we have, like how many participants?
For, for baseball, we've seen a decline in numbers over the last few years. Um, some leagues were, you know, seven and six, seven years ago were as high as 1,100 and they're down to 600.
600 total with all these leagues?
Well, no, that's, that's, um, that's Walmart, that's Pony, Pony Baseball, used to have a high of 1,100 and now they're down to about 600 participants, so there's been a decline there. Each league, each little league has seen a decline. Soccer, that has not been the case, football, that has not been the case, there's been increases there. Um, basketball was steady at 450 kids and that was always really popular, so, uh, baseball's been the prime area where things are changing, but that's not that people don't want to play baseball, I really think it's a trend of going to, to travel. People are leaving leagues and going to travel baseball.
I know the little kids, it's usually just recreation, like I mentioned, the neighboring cities is where people register. Um, do you know how many neighboring cities run their own leagues versus those who don't?
I cannot, I, I can't give you specific numbers, but we did look into it today, reached out to Baldwin Park, Pomona, um, Laverne, San Dimas, and they're, they're seeing a decline in their recreational sports as well.
But they run their own leagues?
Yes, they do. Most are running, most are running T-ball. T-ball, some baseball, but very, very little T-ball, flag football and basketball.
Okay, um, any questions?
Are you sure? I think you have more, you, this is your specialty.
Yeah, well, I mean, my only thing, my concern is, you know, the upkeep of these, you know, facilities, like you said, like if there's a broken window or their infrastructure, we don't have the fundings and there's, um, you know, I, like, I don't even know what the total cost or, if you do the breakdown of what these leagues provide, is that equivalent to the cost of, you know, because I know sports, generally speaking, sports make money, um, compared to like cultural classes or anything, uh, that's, I see it everywhere, um, including in my city. So sports is a moneymaker, but, you know, I'm just surprised that we don't even get like anything, like even a dollar, a dollar per registration per kid that goes to the city for just like refurbishment fee or just for things for infrastructure fee, and I would like to see that, something reasonable, something fair, so that we can also sustain our facilities. I mean, I know we have outdated, um, infrastructure, like you said, if things are broken, we, you know, incur the cost and, and by what you just said, only one league donates, all the others doesn't, we don't get any.
And let me correct that, like I said, a lot donate time and things like that, but the, like, like I said, I have to give the West Covina Bruins, I have to give them credit as well. There are another, you know, the, the sports that are turf, that impact the turf a lot, West Covina Bruins. They're another, you know, the the sports that are turf, that impact the turf a lot. West Covina Bruins, they just went out, did all the manpower, reseeded Cortez Park, roped it off themselves. We helped them where we could, but, you know, we don't have equipment to do that. We don't do that per se, but we help wherever we can. But they're another league that did that. So it's not.
Yeah, I I remember that. Okay, they used a lot of manpower to try to fix the field. Okay, because they are playing over there. Yes.
And the leagues and the leagues do work on their infield. They do bring in dirt and so they're all doing that. But when it comes to cash, I have to say that West Covina Bruins and West Covina Soccer, ever since they got their new facility, they've been putting a lot of money into it. I I mean, to me, thirty thousand's a lot, you know.
That's Cortez Park, okay, for the Bruin way.
Yeah, Cortez is the football field. Correct.
Okay, um.
So does all the leagues take care of the only parks that they utilize or do they also take care of the others?
Just the parks they utilize.
We see certain parks, certain fields are kinda.
There is a disparity. There is. You know, um, that's something that we try to stay on top of. I mean, we we balance all kinds of things around Sports Council. Sports Council's been in place since, uh, you know, I'm the old man of the bunch. I've been here for a long time, but Sports Council's been here, I think, since the mid nineties. You know, I think the bylaws were passed in two thousand. And I'm just an advisor on that board, but but, um, we try to encourage putting our efforts together, joining leagues together, putting resources together. Uh, for example, the partnership with Mavericks Baseball Academy at Palm View Park has has turned that park around a little bit. They put a lot of money and and time into that park and the leagues are working together and doing that. So we're always trying to encourage that. Um, to back up also to talk about the issue about the fees and things, when the fee schedule comes around, every year we're asked about fee, you know, fee ideas. That's something we'll definitely put back into the fee schedule. It could be a registration fee of a dollar to five dollars a participant to each league, or it can be a a minimum cost for lights. You know, we can we can bring both of those to the council and then council can decide there if you so choose.
Okay, can you work on that then?
Yeah, we'll. We'll definitely make it part of the budget process and put it in the fee schedule.
Thank you.
Okay, and other city council, any other question follow up? No, are you sure?
I didn't wanna neglect neglect you all. Sorry, you know.
She asked all the question we had, but I I I have some kind. I I could just receive the email, for example, from the Friendship Park. Okay, and, uh, okay, the person, uh, Matthews complaining about November twenty eighth, okay, and twenty nine, they have a softball tournament, okay, going on at the Friendship Park. Do you know anything about this?
This is the first I've heard of that. We do have it rented out, but this will be like the same issue of the group at Shadow Oak Park. So we'll find out who was there and we'll we'll reach out. And if they're not following guidelines, then we won't let them use the facility anymore.
Mostly, I I don't think, okay, during the weekend, we should have any people playing over there. But again, and this is how, uh, what we say in control and the people just show up and, uh, okay, and use the the space, okay, and and that create the issue because the park priorities for our resident to use because we pay taxes, okay, and we should be priority to use the space. But I understand, okay, we have all this, okay, different group, okay, we need to have each of, uh, the, okay, the the league, they have their own hometown, okay, I understand. We want to, okay, encourage more children, okay, to play. And of course, after pandemic, okay, we want to see what is, any way we can get all this park and all this facility be utilized. Okay, first priorities are our resident, our our children. And then we go to outside, see how they want to use. But I think the priority is our our taxpayer, our resident to utilize. So so this is what, okay, and my 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 request. And regarding, okay, as a professional, as a mayor protein, let he Lopez Viado, okay, talking about all these things, I think you can kind of help out, could set up some kind of policy and work with our city staff to make it a little bit more rounded and the, uh, and the the points, I think the people concerned is who can use this the space? Do they have a special? Do they have a privilege? Is that fairness for everybody to use the space? I think that we need to create a fairness for everybody all have a chance. Okay, I think thi- I think this is what a lot of people want. They complain, they say, hey, this is my park. Why? Okay, somebody using from outside. I think this is some issue we need to look into it. Okay, so Mike, go ahead.
Mayor Wu, are we talking just during the pandemic or after the pandemic? Because I I do think some of these issues, um, you know, the reason we let renters back out there is our hope was that would be us having more control, our users being there. We were hoping leagues would be back and more active, following the guidelines. Um, as we see in the case of where that's not happening is where the problem is. I guess my question is, is it more of a policy during pandemic?
I think both, okay. Right now, we don't know when pandemic will begin. So we need to have some kind of policy to kind of, uh, control the situation we have for people just use without any regard. Second thing is the future of policy, a fairness for everybody have a chance to use. I think while we see, including the orange field, okay, regarding the soccer field, the people who's using it, uh, who can use, okay, who can rent. So I think that is the issue with the fairness, that everybody, if they can apply, maybe, okay, and we can have fairness for people to play.
Just one more question to be clear. For example, your example of Orange Wood Park, there is no time to rent. We have never rented Orange Wood Park and the league, you know, which is more than fifty one percent of residents, takes priority and they take every second there. So my question is, are we looking to make time available to rent out at that facility?
We have any spare time for any or are they taking entire time Monday to Sunday?
They don't even have enough for what they need and they could probably sign up another thousand kids. We do not, you know, soccer is, we have lots of baseball fields, but we don't have many soccer fields.
Soccer is is very tough in all cities.
Hey, B K K, we can build ten over there.
And if you draw, you know, I don't know if you're, yeah, the soccer complexes always do well, yes.
Soccer complex.
Soccer does well.
Yeah, we can rent it out. We can have all our children play there.
Yeah. So I just, you know, I just wanted to be clear on that que- you know, I just wanna be clear. Are we looking to change our policy completely and say, hey, West Covina Soccer, you're gonna have less time and we're gonna rent some time out to local residents? Or we just, are we sticking with Sports Council comes first?
Yeah, because we don't have a space any places in the city, right?
What we do have, West Covina Soccer could use that too. Like, we do let them use Shadow Oak as well.
This is, they need a huge. They, yeah, I know Covina, they have their soccer field for for rent. I think how many? Six of them, right? Yeah, I think it's very popular. Okay, any other council have any issue? And do we have a?
Uh, as for baseball, one more question. As for baseball, uh, the fields, do we have a lot of requests to permit those out in general?
Definitely.
And my, yeah, my only concern is the usage of our little leagues, if they are properly using the fields or are they overusing it? Because if they are overusing it, you know, we'd like to open it up to these permits. And do we have any adult baseball leagues?
Well, we to give you, we don't have any fields for adult baseball. Basically, our fields are up for twelve years old, except for Maverick. But Maverick is programmed out ninety five percent of the time and then we're working on getting youth that play on that size field there. The only adult baseball field here in the city that I'm aware of is the high schools and Del Nordy Park, but those are on school property. So all there are leagues that play in the city, but they are rented through the school district and the school district handles that.
So the gentleman that was here earlier, he played, uh, what, what?
That's that was Les LaFleur. He played. We have a group of seniors that are following all social guidelines that play inner squad games on Monday and Friday mornings.
Where at again?
At Cameron Park.
Cameron Park.
Cameron Park. Yes, sir.
Technically, that's that an adult league could be.
Yes, we're not gonna say league. We're gonna say it's and and they don't have to. And to be honest with you, they do not have teams. They do. They do like a pickup.
It's a pickup. Uh, we have that.
Squad, yeah.
We don't wanna hundred senior come over here, talk to us.
Oh, if they were doing it, but that's the case. They have actually been very great and followed all social.
I think nice people, the nice guy. Okay, so, yeah, hey, they need exercise. They need to have activity. Nothing wrong about that. Okay, anything else?
Uh, just, you know, I I'm comparing your rates and fees with, you know, us, the city, City of L A. I know your ball fields are a little bit different, but like you you mentioned, you'll be working on that. So I guess we'll discuss further when you come up with that.
Yeah, we'll bring the fees back.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Uh, do we have a, this is we see in file or this is we see in file, right? So do I have a motion we see in file?
I motion to receive and file.
Thank you, Mayor Proten Lopez Viado. Okay, second by Councilman Casiano and Roque, please.
Councilman Costelanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, and the motion approved five zero. Then we move to last item, number twelve. Okay, number twelve, okay. Uh, okay, number twelve regarding, okay, uh, city, okay, uh, seek to potentially, okay, set up our independent health department. And I think they have a three option we can explore. Okay, the first thing is we can talk to, okay, and the Pasadena's Health Department, see that's feasible because they allow the outdoor dining. Okay, and they similar size of our city and they in San Gabriel, San Gabriel Valley. So we didn't send similar location. So hopefully can a little bit more feasible to our needs. Second, we can set up, okay, basically, a regional, okay, our health department. Okay, I think I talked to, uh, okay, uh, other city and the other city mayor, they are very, okay, interested, okay, they really feel like, okay, the local control, local needs, very needed, okay. And so we're talking about the Bowen Park mayor, it's okay, Azusa, okay, Warner, okay, Covina, okay, La Puente, okay, City of Industry, uh, okay, also the Glendoras, okay, also city mayor, they they all want to explore about this opportunity. Why? Because if we have a regional, okay, and health department, you will load the cost because all the city join in. So it's not the West Covina Health Department, it's our East San Gabriel Valley health, the region, health department and serve our region. Okay, and that will be including, okay, uh, in, okay, joint venture with our hospital. I talked to Queensville Valley and I talked to Kaiser and they are interested too. So I think with the hospital, okay, and with all the other city join in, it really can lower the major cost. Okay, I think this is a okay, uh, the opportunity for us to look into, okay, and set it up, okay, and with all this joint partnership together to serve our region. I think it's important because our number, ours, okay, situation is different than entire county. So if we can have our, okay, and area, so in that way, we can set up the policy by possible the medical doctor from Queensville Valley as a directors, okay, or Kaiser to help us to make sure, okay, and our local resident, our local community, our local business can be served by genuine is local, local need, not by basically currently is a one policy fit all. Because right now, county is so big and their their health department request this. And then if you have no health department, no matter how your situation, you have to comply with what they have due to we have no local, okay, health department with our local data. So this is what I propose, okay, and I hope, okay, and our council work together and help to have all our other city and all this medical service agency to work together and to help out to get rid of this pandemic, to really serve and protect our community. Yes, Mayor Proten, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I know we had a gentleman here earlier, um, and I know he he already left, but I just wanted to, uh, I share his frustration along with many people. Um, and, you know, believe me, I work in L A, so the constant changes and hearing the, um, hypocrisy of do what I say, not what I do. We all have that frustration. Um, like I said, I I share his frustration minus the the explicit language cuz I know children do watch this. Um, and, you know, the the frustration I have is, you know, we don't have like the percentage of errors. We see these stats and numbers, but like at my facility, I've had a staff test false positive and they still count it. Um, I did see a a data that had stats that showed, um, the last places that people visited before contracting COVID and it showed supermarkets was rated number one and restaurants was rated number sixteen. So that there's all these concerns and I said, stated before that community, every community is different. One size doesn't fit all. And even working in L A, some parts of our work area has like a higher COVID issues and we don't, but we all get punished or we all get, you know, put in one, um, one scenario. So I just, you know, I just didn't wanna be pun- our city shouldn't be punished for other cities who don't comply. And I think we've done a good job, you know, the the residents are being respectful. We're taking precautionary measures. Businesses put in a lot of money. So I am looking for, you know, to see different options. And these are just looking at options. We're just, instead of, you know, people telling us we're not doing anything, well, look, we are. So I just wanted to say thank you and I I mean, I do look forward to seeing what we can do.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor Proten and, uh, Councilman Casiano, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, as discussed, I'd like to talk to all of our surrounding cities and get more traction. I know we've gotten a lot of interest. I also got a notification that Beverly Hills City Council tonight voted to oppose L A County's outdoor, uh, dining bound. So if, uh, if the council agrees with me, I'd like to join Beverly Hills in in, uh, requesting the Board of Supervisors to place, uh, the, uh, place it on their agenda for December eighth to discuss this again because obviously there's a lot of dissatisfaction. We need as a county to take another look at this, uh, which is why we've gained so much traction for this East San Gabriel Valley Health Department consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilman Casiano and Councilman Johnson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I do agree hardly on this, you know, we can't say, you know, one shoe fits everything. It doesn't, you know, and we're all being thrown in the same basket, you know, and I look at the outdoor dining. You know, I've gone around and seen all the outdoor dining and you see how everybody's separated, right, to keep the social distance and everything like that. And these are restaurants that may never open again if we're not careful. So anything that we can do to help them? That I'm really for that. So I I do believe that, you know, we can talk to other cities and find out if we can all get together at the East San Gabriel Valley. I think it'd be a a great opportunity at this time and date to move forward now while we're in this pandemic. So we we sure may not help us at this moment. But, you know, it's for the future. If we can have something set up now, during the future, when it comes around again, who knows? You know, maybe we can do this.
Yep, very good. Okay, and Jessica, you want to say something or you want to have, uh, Jessica? Okay, uh, otherwise, Mayor Proten, go ahead.
I hope that they also look into, I know we are in the state of California, but we have different parts of the region, different counties. And I know they all, they're not all adhering and doing the same thing. I was in San Diego, oh, yeah, and, you know, it was outdoor dining. So I'd like to see that included.
We we want to explore all the angle, okay, all the possibility. And I think, Jessica, you want to say something?
Yeah, um.
Go ahead.
I would need to explore if more local control because I just find it absolutely drive ten miles away and freely at restaurant. Yet our businesses are being put, we can't, you know. I would also like to.
Breaking up.
Yeah, uh, Jessica, you cut in and out. We can build it. Can you understand?
Oh, that's strange.
Yeah, no, sorry about that. You want to try it again?
Oh, I was just saying it's ridiculous that you could literally drive ten minutes down the freeway from us to that restaurant while our businesses are being shut business. Um, so in addition to exploring the idea of regional health department, I would also like to what we can do to help our businesses stay open. I health department can come in to shut down restaurants, but is there anything we can do to help them get down that? Declare us as the sanctuary city from COVID. I don't know, something.
Yeah, okay.
To help them.
Yeah, understand you. Okay, so, okay, a hundred percent, okay, agree with you and how we can find a way to help our I don't know how many hundreds, okay, of our restaurant right now has been kind of jerk around here, there, but still get shut down. Okay, and they, the problem is this, okay, the county want them to do this and they comply with a QR code, with a partition, with six feet apart and spend all the money and then they say not good enough, go outside. So they spend the money, put a tent, put a, okay, furniture, put a, okay, a heater and then say, no, you can shut down. And I understand, okay, we all disagree with that, but, okay, even we say, okay, we are against county, we will want our outdoor dining. But since we don't have a health department and the county will send their inspector and fine our restaurant, this is the problem. They already have so many restaurants, like Matthew just say, his restaurant have been fined five hundred dollars. Another restaurant, uh, quite a few, they calling me, they say, Mayor, can you help? Okay, they find me with outdoor karaoke. Okay, and or outdoor something, they don't like it, they just fine you five hundred bucks. And in this tough time, it's not fair to those restaurants, okay, and has been fined by the county. So so the issue is even we say, okay, we want you to open, but how we stop the county inspector come over here, impose all those fine? Do you have any suggestion?
Um, I don't. I think they're all very valid points.
Uh, I don't, I think they're all very valid points. Um, I, Tom and I talked earlier today and I know that he and his, uh, office are putting together a memo and we do, uh, we'll get something back to the council as quickly as possible.
So you, you can see five city council all agree about this issue. I think all other city in our neighborhood, they all feel the pain and they all understand. Yes, okay, Councilman Castellano, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and as, piggybacking on, on fines, I, I wanted to, uh, ask Mark to ask the county or just if you know the answer, uh, the owner of Tamale Street and the rest. I mentioned that he was fined for outdoor entertainment. Uh, I was unaware that the county has the authority to fine them over music. Is that, do they have that authority?
Uh, I would need to look into that. Um, I had not heard that either until Matthew came, so I'm not sure under what authority.
Please do, because that didn't make any sense.
That makes sense, okay, I, I think.
If it does not, I would.
I think we should help him recover that if they.
I, I think the problem is they show up, they fine and then you have to appear. And they think about you don't appear and they will pocket the $500 bucks. So, so this is, uh, another issue. Well, we have a problem with the county health department come over here and throw all this kind of curve ball, okay, and destroy our, okay, um, business. I think this is how we so frustrated and that's why we have no choice, okay? Have to do this, okay? We have to protect our community and, and I understand when I talk to all the mayor, everybody, the first thing, including myself, is the cost. Okay, what's the cost, okay? How much we cost, can we afford it? But with what I'm saying original, with all the city pitching, and don't forget, okay, all the health department, they have income too, permit fee, this fee. So sometimes it's sustainable by its own fee. And, but the thing, how we set it up with personnel, that will be basically, we're talking about the hospital, okay, all this medical service, okay, entity to kind of help out and work together, because they already have everything. And we need a medical doctor, okay, a medical facility to tell us our health, okay, situation in our, okay, community. I think this is what we trying to do. But anyway, I, I think we can see the 5-0, okay, and we don't even have a roll call, because this is how the council request. You can see, everybody all very passionate about this and we want, okay, city to really, okay, look into ASAP, because the people ask us, it's about how fast. Okay, so we need to get this thing rolling ASAP. Go ahead, okay, and Councilman Castellano.
I wanted to ask the council if they could get their support for what I mentioned about Beverly Hills. Beverly Hills wants to push back on the county to.
Uh, I can second it, okay, and I'm no problem, I don't think, okay, anybody against that? No, right, Jessica, you're not against that either, right? Jessica? I don't think she's against it, no.
I, it turned out on me, nothing a question.
Are you okay, okay, uh?
Pushing back again, uh, or joining Beverly Hills and pushing back on the county to reconsider the outdoor dining ban?
So we will send a letter, okay, to support.
I would actually like to ask that, because Governor Newsom and allowing businesses to per sales tax, which I understand and help, but the question comes how to purposes, like police and fire, if one of our main sources of.
You're cutting in and out.
Jessica, you're cutting in and out, very difficult to understand.
I'm sorry, I said.
You out again? You want to go outside, find a cell tower?
Is this better?
Uh, continue.
Okay, I was just saying that Governor Newsom announced another deferral of sales tax for businesses. So that's obviously going to affect the city's income and ability to pay for essential services. And so I think we also need to push back against that.
Okay, uh, so let's starting with the first one, with, uh, uh, Dario Castellano, Councilman Castellano regarding support, okay, Beverly Hill City Council against, uh, county about banning, okay, the outdoor dining, okay? And, uh, okay, nobody against them, we send a letter to them, 5-0, okay? And the, the second thing is, uh, uh, okay, uh, council, uh, members, okay, Shoemaker, you want to send a letter to against Governor Newsom regarding, uh, the issue about sales tax?
Correct.
Okay, can you address, okay, what you want the letters about?
Um, I, basically that with the deferral of sales tax, it impacts cities who are already struggling, ability to pay their own bills and for essential services like police and fire.
Got it. Okay, and, uh, okay, and do any council against, okay, the issue? Because, because if, if, uh, okay, Governor Newsom doing that, we have no sales tax. This is 26% of our income. So, okay, we against the follow of the sales tax, so in that way, we can have a revenue to pay our bill. So we will support Jessica Shoemaker, Councilman Shoemaker, okay, and the letter. Okay, anybody against that? Nope, okay, uh, fine, Jessica, okay, we going to address the letter. So city attorney and the city, Assistant City Manager, you guys, you guys get it?
Yes.
Okay, very good, so we have the two letter to send out. One support Beverly Hill, one against Governor Newsom regarding the follow of a sales tax. Okay, so that's it. And other than that, okay, and we already approved 5-0 to request and we want to dis, uh, done ASAP, because I don't know how long they can survive, our small business, our mom and pop, okay, not only the restaurant, a lot of business suffering big time right now. Did you go back to the mall, I don't think, okay, 50% is close. And after pandemic, how many will come back? So we need to really proactive, okay? And just when resident talking about has same idea, that is correct, okay? If we don't do it right now, to do it beforehand, how about next pandemic? Because we might have another thing we're coming out in the horizon. So we need to really do something right now to protect our community. And then now is the time to act, uh, to, to make thing happen. So city, please, okay, to make this thing happen ASAP. And again, consolidate with all the city, talking to other city manager and work on the budget. Okay, from there, we see, okay, how can we make it happen? And the city attorney looking to our legality to make this thing break away from the county. Thank you so much and we go to next agenda will be the AB 1234. This last time going to say AB 1234, okay? And we have a numb because of the pandemic, okay? So, and the council comment, anything, want to say anything? No, okay, not, I, I want to say something.
Actually, I just have one quick question.
Go ahead, Jessica.
It's a follow-up, a, uh, request for the, the Governor Newsom. And that is, um, from what I understand, we went out to RFP for legislative services. Um, I would like a status on that, because we are now in December. The session starts next month. We don't have a legislative plan in place or priorities or what work we want to be done. And so that's why I would like status.
Okay, and the city, Assistant City Manager and Paulina, did you understand the request? I know a little bit in and out, but I think you understand he want the status report.
Yes, we.
Prioritize of the issue.
Correct, we did go out to RFP as a, a council member indicated. Um, Paulina does have those proposals, we have started reviewing them. Um, did we get four or five proposals, do you recall?
I don't remember offhand, sorry.
But you have something to report back?
Yes, we do, we do have proposals, we are reviewing them and we will bring an item forward to the.
Okay, thank you, and Jessica, anything else?
No.
Okay, uh, okay, Councilman Castellano, go ahead.
Just want to say, I, I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving and continue staying safe.
Okay, and this is, uh, what?
There's an adjournment, if, Mayor, if you could.
What, what, what I missed?
On, on the, uh, the bottom of page four. Adj, adjournment in memory of?
Huh? I think I done everything, right? Review, part is already done, okay? And request consideration for Mayor Wu, this me, okay? And the city council comment, this is what we doing right now. What else? What, what else? We have different thing? Nothing?
All right, sure.
Oh. Okay, uh, excuse me, come over. Okay, uh, just add one adjournment, okay, I just received right now and the final request, okay, and, uh, adjournment, okay, we want to, okay, adjourn, okay, the meeting in the memory of Deputy City Clerk, okay, Ms. Rita Buchanan. And she will be missed by family and friend. Uh, I want to send the city condolence to her family and make sure they understand the city has a, a big loss about her past.
We will do that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, and, uh, after that, I want to say something, because this is, uh, the mayor, this is my last meeting, conduct the meeting. Woo, I'm free, okay? So, uh, in January 19, uh, Mayor Protem will become the mayor, okay? You will be sit over here, uh, host the show. But during this one year, since last years, okay, November 3rd year, and unfortunately, we have a pandemic. But I really want to thank my council, okay, colleague, okay, including Jessica, okay, in the, on the phone. I really want to thank you guys, okay, to help me, okay, and went through this very tough year. And without, okay, you guys help, okay, it's, I don't think I can be smooth, okay? And didn't get a stroke, okay, and die on the job, okay? Because you guys help, okay? And I want to thank the staff, okay, the staff, okay? I know a lot of time, okay, I'm very demanding, I want you guys to make the thing happen. I want the presentation, I want the certain way, because I like the devil in the detail, okay? I like everything in the right direction. But, okay, if, if I making too much demand, okay, please, okay, forgive me, okay? Regarding, okay, I'm sometimes a little bit, okay, just like, hey, we need to do this and, and that. And I want to thank the resident, okay, and the resident, okay, for bear with me for this whole year, okay, with me, the city over here, okay, with the so-called the Tony's Show, okay? So, some people doesn't like the show, okay? But no matter what, I really want to thank the resident, no matter they criticize us, okay? They praise us, it's all the business of the public, okay? You cannot please anybody, you cannot please everybody, but we are doing our job. We try our best and to do our job. So in conclusion, I really want to thank, okay, all the, our colleague and the city staff and the audience and everybody and even my police officer over here. Thank you for here to protect us, I feel so safe, okay? Thank you for, thank you so much, you're always here next to us, okay? And Merry Christmas. So, so I want to, okay, and this for, uh, Lucky Louis Johnson now, okay? So, uh, as a good friend of mine, okay, and, uh, okay, we, okay, together, okay, I work over here for five years and, okay, I know, not December 15 yet, so I will talk more on December 15. But here, since this is the last time I conduct, uh, okay, our city council meeting. So, uh, again, uh, my deepest appreciation for all the people. Thank you, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, a motion.
Okay, and second, okay, so, okay, uh, okay, uh, meeting adjourned. Okay, I want to thank everybody, be safe and good night, uh, meeting adjourned.